Judging by the screen going blank, I think we are at a starting point. So, welcome everyone to the June 4th, 2019, 9:00 AM Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Lynda, please hold the roll.
Deckent?
Here.
Dave Line?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Here.
Inzki?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor. Please. Thank you, sir.
My name is Darryl Peterson. Glad to be here this morning. John just gave me this message here, and I really wasn't aware about the Virginia Beach shooting. And it's gotta be devastating. But it's not only just in Virginia Beach, it's all around, everywhere. There's two sides that we have to look at, the dark side and the light side, the bright side. The bright side, if you follow God's plan and purpose, it's a good side. But these people are not following God's plan and purpose. You can't blame God for these because people do what people do. And I know of different incidents that I've seen and helped with or whatever. You just sit there and cry because of people being who they are. And what they do, they don't care about your life or anybody's life, they just care about revenge or doing what they like to do. And it's sad, but that's life. But you know what we need to do is what John asked me to do, we're gonna pray. And you know, it's too bad we can't get more people in Hutchinson, and I know there's a lot of people praying for Hutchinson. But prayer changes things. And so, we pray for the city every Sunday morning, I know other churches do too. But anytime you let up on it, you leave a crack in the door open, and the enemy will try to come in and do what he does. And so, let's pray. Dear heavenly most gracious Father, we lift up all of these people that are affected by this shooting. And Father, we just know the families, friends, fellow employees, each and every one of them, Lord God, is being affected in one way, shape, or form. And Father, I pray for your grace and your mercy, and Father, that your love should shed abroad in their hearts, help them to encourage and strengthen and be an overcomer, a more than a conqueror. And Father, we just thank you. We just pray for Hutchinson, but Father God, we pray for every city within the United States, that Father God, that people shall learn to do right, people shall open their eyes and their ears and learn which side they need to be on. And Father, we just thank you for divine protection, we thank you, Lord God, that Father, the Holy Spirit will inspire us, show us, and direct us, and give us information. And Father, I just thank you, that people that will pray, as Second Chronicles 7:14 say, "If my people shall pray and humble themselves," that Father, you can heal this wicked land. And Father, as we pray, that Father, we just thank you, that people, they just think, they should know, there's something not right here. And the sooner that the wrong is made right, that Father, the better it's going to be. I thank you, Father, for this city, I thank you, Father, for our police department, or fire department, and Father, everybody that's involved with whatever department they're working in this city. This city has to have departments that are in unison, they walk in unity, they have a vision and dream to make this city the best city that it could ever be. And Father, I just thank you for that. I thank you for this day, this meeting, and the people, Father, that's here today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Darryl.
Yeah. These occurrences, we hear about them, they're becoming what appears to me to be a little bit too readily happening. And so, thank you for sharing those kind of words. No time for you, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Perfect. This is the time where we allow those that are not here for something specifically that's on the agenda, if there's something you want to bring to the council's attention, feel free to approach the podium, announce your name and your address, and whatever it is you'd like to visit with. First come, first served.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. Just wanted to give a quick update on the flooding in Cary Park. The Hutchinson Zoo still closed, the groundwater pond is several feet outside of its banks, about a third of the zoo is still underwater. From Saturday to Sunday, the water continued to rise, I think we were holding steady the last couple days. So, all the animals have been moved, they've been affected, some of them are in temporary holding facilities on site, some of them, like the deer, we actually just cut their pen open and put some temporary fence so they could get up to Service Road to some high ground. So, also, the basement of the visitor center also has about an inch to three quarters of an inch of water. We have three pumps running, sump pumps running 24/7, as much as it can pump, and we're basically keeping up with the water that's coming into the sump from the drain tiles underneath the basement. So, again, that's just groundwater coming up through the drain tiles in the basement into the sump, and we pump it out. So, we're doing our best just to maintain it at that level. Damage that we're expecting at the zoo, the service barn has over a foot of water in it, so there's gonna be some issues with it, as well as the basement, probably the bottom half of the drywall all the way through the basement will have to be cut out and replaced. The other structures that are affected at the zoo are just small, like animal holding facilities, we don't expect a lot of damage in those, and if it is, it's stuff we can fix relatively easy. Also, with the golf course, we are seeing some improvement in some areas, and then we're seeing the water still come up in other areas. The areas that we're seeing improvements on are the surface water, so water that has run in on the surface that is starting to dry up a little bit, but where we have groundwater, that's still coming up, just like at the zoo. Some of these areas have been underwater for over two weeks now, and so, we really would expect a lot of turf death in those areas, so we possibly could lose one entire fairway. The other thing we're worried about, then, is all of our herbicide applications that we applied have now all been washed through the soil profile, so we've lost that barrier, as well as we're gonna fight fungus all summer long when everything does dry out. So, we won't know the full extent, but we were expecting quite a bit of turf death from the standing water. And then also, the trail's been underwater for quite a while, it's not uncommon that the trail goes underwater, it happens a few times a year, but never for this extended amount of time. I don't expect a lot of damage on it, but we'll have to just wait and see what happens. We are tracking all of our time, equipment use, materials we purchased in response to the flood, for hoping we can get reimbursed through FEMA event, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
What a mess.
Justin, I just have one question, does the city plan to do any mosquito spraying at Cary Park?
We do not do mosquito spraying, we are doing dunks, the tablets, in the standing water.
Are those, as a follow-up to that, are they still available at the county, I think it is?
Last I knew, they were not, but I don't.
They've given out what they had to give out?
Yeah, I have not followed up with them, but we are putting those in the standing water.
Do they typically work better than spraying?
Yeah, 'cause they kill the mosquito at the source, the spraying, you gotta directly contact that mosquito, and so, the timing has to be perfect, so.
Do we have a sprayer anymore?
We have one at the golf course that we use very seldomly, yeah.
Those are traditionally, the golf course, or even like a baseball field, is really the only places where spraying is real effective, because you can be right there over the, you know, spraying neighborhoods, we've talked about that over the years, you're driving down the street, it's really not very effective at all.
Yeah, but with this much standing water, I don't know that spraying would do much good, the dunks, treating what's in the water, the larvae that's in the water is gonna be the best approach.
Just for citizenry and in general, the dunks are not particularly expensive, I use them, and, yeah, they are effective.
Yep.
And you can help yourself as well by dumping your birdbaths, if you have tires, anything that holds a stagnant water. It just flip it over, just get rid of it, that helps the cause.
John, can you touch on a little bit, when you sent this update out to the council, I inquired about insurance and funding available from the state or federal to help pay for damages, when will we know about that?
You know, I don't know a lot of the details, maybe the chief can help me, but, you know, we're, I mean, we've been declared, you know, an area of disaster, and I believe there's a dollar amount that has to occur before there's reimbursement. The last time that happened for us was the ice storm of whatever, that was 2009, yeah. And, you know, it was probably a year and a half by the time we got reimbursed, I mean, it's just a long process, but the key is to make sure we're keeping track of our expenses so that if it does happen, then we're available for that. I have not received any word that that will happen, I think a lot of it's gonna depend on the total dollar damage.
And on the insurance, we did ask very early on, at least in Cary Park, we're not covered for flood insurance there, so any damage there would either be out of pocket and hopefully reimbursed through FEMA.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Anybody else want to approach and speak to the council on any matter that's not currently on the agenda? Going once? Okay, very good, thank you, next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six A, consider exclusive negotiation agreement for hotel convention center project.
Counselor.
Yes, Mayor Counsel, let me give just a brief background as to kinda how we got to where we are today. You recall, last summer, we put out on the street a request for proposals soliciting hotel development groups for a hotel convention center project. At that time, we had four inquiries, really only one formal request. We then, the task force, which has been working on this for the past year, which included representatives of the chamber, Councilmember Decket, Councilmember Dave Line, and myself represented the city. So, after those interviews, then, that group, we recommended that we move forward with the Leisure Development Company to work on a project here for us. And so, we were prepared, at the request of Leisure, to bring in exclusive negotiation agreement to the city council back in early February, and at that time, we decided to hold off on that until the hotel study that you just recently received was completed, the chamber basically put that out, solicited that contract, we paid for half of that, so that's in place now. Leisure Corporation or Leisure Development Company have reviewed that, and we're ready to move forward on this exclusive negotiation agreement with Leisure. And I really, I want to point out, this agreement, again, was requested by Leisure, there's no cost to this agreement, and essentially, it doesn't obligate us to anything, except that, over the course of the next six months, we will work with the Leisure Corporation on the development of a project. And if at that point in time, we haven't reached an agreement, we don't have a development project that we're excited about, or the developer's decided he wants to go the other way, then we part ways and start the process over. If things go as planned, we end up with a proposed project, we would then enter into a formal development agreement with this company to build a project here in Hutchinson, and that's a more complicated agreement. So, I just want to point out, too, that, you know, this agreement isn't set on a site, there's no specific site, there's no hotel brand selected, and there's really no specifics on size of convention center, number of rooms, those are all to be worked out during this phase in working with Leisure Corporation. So, with that, I would be, would stand for questions, I know Councilman Decket and Councilman Dave Line might want to add some to this process, as they've been active in that as well. So, it's, we're ready to move to the next step, it seems these things, you know, take just forever to get rolling, and we lost quite a bit of time waiting on the feasibility study, but everybody involved felt it was important to have that information at hand, so.
Do we know, is there anybody, and I'm asking in general, here as a representative of Leisure?
No, there is not, yeah, Mr. Olson, I've talked with him, he's in Minnesota for a while, so, but we will be working with some of his office, his staff out of Kansas City.
Okay. One of the things I'll lead off, if I can, and then we can see where the conversation takes us or whatever, but again, I want to reemphasize what Ms. Deardolph, the city manager, said, it's not a binding agreement, there's no fiscal impact to the city by entering into this, if that's the way we should choose to go. It is gonna move something forward that I think we all recognize was something that needs to have a conversation about and needs a remedy. There's been a lot of passionate conversation about location and all that, we have to recognize that this is a private developer, he's gonna have his ideas about where he thinks it might go or whatever, but for my own personal basis, and if it's gonna involve public funding, I think we should have some say and some input on where we'd like to steer that somewhat. And I was hoping that somebody from Leisure might be here that we could have that conversation as well, but I also would encourage them to give all the locations due diligence. I get the impression that some people feel that a site's already been selected, and again, that's not the case as far as I know, but I hope that we don't just get token opinions about how to build it or where to build it without thoroughly vetting each and every location and giving it its due diligence, but that's all I really wanted to add.
I think for the benefit of the general public, some folks may not be aware of who Leisure Hotel Development Group is, and I might just take a minute and, I guess, convey some individual personal knowledge of who Leisure Hotel is and Mr. Steve Olson. I think this is a great first step in terms of this whole high-profile project here, but we really have with Leisure Hotel and Steve Olson, a very experienced, seasoned, and very successful hotel developer that has demonstrated their ability to put a successful project together throughout the whole Midwest and multiple hotel recreation projects. He knows Hutch, he knows the market, so I think this is a positive first step. The other piece is that I think in trying to break this down for the general public in terms of, and I've got kind of a punch list of some expectations, John, if I will, and just kinda cite some of these things, because the agreement is fairly broad, it's very general, and it needs to be that way, but in terms of, after this six-month period, I guess my expectations in terms of more of questions would be things such as, do we expect a site plan or plans from Leisure itself, multiple site plans, will there be conceptual drawings, will there be a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C, or a singular plan, I guess these are all open-ended kinds of questions. It'll be important to know the project cost, obviously, both on the hotel side and the convention side, obviously, you mentioned financing options, important, and I think that in this first six months, because this is a very accelerated process here, what their timetable may be in the project itself. I think we're all anxious to know whether or not they come up with any recommended hotel flag, whatever that may be. And then, Mayor, you mentioned the city's role in terms of financing, and what our role may be in terms of public financing, how that might look, because we're, I think there are expectations that there will be some kind of an incentive package that will help drive this project. And then, finally, I guess my question, John, maybe to you and Paul, whether or not we ought to consider in this agreement an extension clause, whether that's important or not, I mean, it just basically says from the time that the agreement is exercised, we've got six months, whether it needs to be a specific date, or do we want the option of a potential extension clause to consider at the time, so. And then, finally, I think from the standpoint of the community itself, John, I assume you will be the liaison person with Leisure and that group, that you will be the voice of the community and the council and the city in terms of this whole six-month process.
Yeah, I think as we move forward, it's important to have that point of contact, working with, you know, I think the task force going forward, but, yeah.
So, those are some things I just lay out in terms of, from a layman's standpoint, in terms of expectations that the community itself might anticipate in this six-month process, and there may be others.
I did want to comment, and I think, and just full disclosure here, you know, you talk about cost estimates, conceptuals on multiple sites, and, you know, in conversations with Leisure, you know, there was a strong indication that they might not be interested in a project downtown or a project on the fairgrounds, I don't think they're going to expend a lot of money, and this gets into this whole site-specific, but, you know, the indication is there, maybe they're interested, but the public's gonna be involved financially a lot more, and so, those are things we're gonna have to talk through, if this body or this community decides we want it here, and it's downtown, we all know that's, you know, a lot more money than what we're talking about on a site that they may have in mind that may only involve our current financial investment at the conference center, you know, the 3% transit guest tax. So, I guess I want to make sure it's clear that there isn't this expectation that in six months, we've come back, or Leisure with, you know, four different sites, fully vetted conceptuals and estimates, because that's a lot of architect, engineering work that I don't believe this company is going to do. I mean, they're making their decision, business decision, based on what hotel's gonna work, I mean, that's been very loud and clear, and you know, through the RFPs, when we interviewed the groups, you know, the convention center is, and what I'm saying is, is a money loser, it doesn't make money for the hotel. Their key is occupancy, and it's the corporate travel, and if you look at the study, you know, the percentage of occupancy is during the week, it's not on necessary conventions, so, you know, there's been, there's a lot of conversation, and I just want to make sure everybody's kinda on the same page, and wouldn't expect that in six months, we're gonna have fully vetted, you know, four locations all over the community, so.
Sean, you just commented on a couple of things that I wanted to reinforce that Councilmember Dave Line had mentioned. There will be public monies involved in this, and so, what we'll grapple with, as we look at different sites, is the cost of investment by public money for one site versus another Quite frankly, there's nothing that money can't buy, so to speak, but it is a matter of how much money is prudent, reasonable, to expend for one site that might be very attractive or popular. And that's not to say that we shouldn't seek to do our darndest, maybe on a site that's more attractive or popular, but there will be those costs. I would hope, John, for two things, that we devise a process to where we, a little more formally, can have some public input. Certainly, I think probably most of, not all of us have been receiving anecdotal input or conversations, and that's fine, that's good to have, and certainly welcome and encourage that, but to have some, a little more formal, combined with, so it may not be something that happens in 30 days, for example, but combined with, I would hope that we could have not fully vetted costs, but at least be talking about 50% more expensive to build in this site, or 50% less expensive to build in this site. And then, the other point I wanted to make is that we need to recognize that the development of the hotel is going to be, unless we're willing to subsidize that, is going to be at the pleasure, so to speak, of the developer, whether it's Leisure or somebody else. I think we're expecting probably that they will bear that cost, whatever that is, but if we want to do something in a particularly different place, or in a different way, or a number of rooms, or any number of things, we, the public, the taxpayers, will probably be asked to say, if you want it here, we can do it, but here's the price tag that goes with it. So, anyway, I come back to, I sure hope we can do some formal public, one or more opportunities, whether it's through an online kind of thing, or whatever, or public forum, but that we can also have that as an opportunity to give information and give some idea.
I think that's good, the only concern I would have is having the necessary information for people to look at, and I'm not sure we would have, I mean, if we're talking about four different sites, we're talking about, you know, pretty significant dollars and estimates, what's that look like, and, I mean, as was mentioned, there's a lot of ideas, but you don't really know what we're talking about in terms of cost, so that may be a little more difficult to.
Well, maybe the task force needs to wrestle with that a little bit, and in conjunction with Mr. Olson and his group, and start winnowing that down, I hope, a bit, and see where we can get in that regards.
And, well, I was gonna add just that piece, too, I would like to see, not necessarily detailed drawings or whatever, and I don't know what the expense associated with that is, but, again, fully vet the various locations that were mentioned in the market study, and allow those an opportunity to rise to the surface, because there are other funding mechanisms, some of these fall within the opportunity zones, so there might be.
None of us understand.
Well, you're right, I know property has to change hands, and I don't think he owns anything down here, so that could happen, and there are other deals, there are funding mechanisms, and as Steve had mentioned, if money were no object, and that's not always the case, obviously, but sometimes you can find ways to get things done, and I'd hate to say that he's already picked a spot, you know, kind of a thing. I hope, as much as he is a developer and has a very strong history in Hutchinson and a nice tie to Hutchinson, that he would be willing to come forth with some ideas on all the locations, and as much as he wants to, we also have the opportunity to not go with what he wants to do if he, if it's not a location that we find that the public is agreeable to, and different implications of having it out in the corridor versus downtown, and different things like that. I just don't want to be, I don't know, my history escapes me, but how long ago we built our last convention center, I don't want to be having the same conversation again, 15 years now, or whatever it is, because we picked the wrong spot again, you know, kind of a thing. So, that's my piece, and he's a developer, it's his funds.
The only issue, I see, with what you said, is you talked about fully vetted costs on four sites, and that's.
I think that's an unreasonable expectation.
And I don't believe Leisure's gonna do that, I mean, based on our conversation, and that's not what this agreement really talks about. If that's what we want, then I think we need to back up and kinda go through, you know, a whole different process, but, you know, fully vetted is, you know, there's a lot involved in that, and I know from conversations with Leisure, that's not their expectation.
Okay.
So, I'm just being, just.
No, and I appreciate that.
And if we're looking at that, we'd probably back up, hire somebody to do all that, and that's probably another nine months, I mean.
I would like to say that I think the public is ready for us to move off-center on this, and I wanted to touch really briefly on the fact that this study we commissioned, this market study, John, is completely independent of this developer. I think there's some talk, some chit-chat out in the community that it's this vast conspiracy to kind of funnel this project in a certain way, and I don't think that's the case, but there was no kind of inner communication between the people doing the study and the developers. That, would that be accurate?
That is correct.
And I remember when we, we met, the task force, that is, with, with the study personnel, I remember it being expressed more than once, that we want a third-party opinion, no matter what it was, to, to be brought to us, rather than something that would be colluded or whatnot, and most definitely wanted and got that, I believe.
And that isn't to say that we have to accept what the market study told us. The market study clearly pinpointed the K-61 corridor, and as a community, we have the opportunity to be visionary and try innovative ways to get it elsewhere if there is enough public pressure to do so. But I think you were the one who touched on it, Deckard. Is there any way we could get a loose amount of money it would cost in this site versus this site? Not a fully, you know, engineered architectural drawings, but I think the community needs to know that if we had it, say, downtown, wouldn't that be phenomenal? That would be amazing, but it's going to require $20 million of the city's funds, versus if we had it here, it might require 2.5% of the bed tax, or whatever that number is. Again, there are creative ways we can make anything happen.
Sure.
It's all, it all comes down to money, but how much money do we want to put toward it if we have a developer willing to put it in? We just don't want to make the same mistake we made before, and let the developer run with it and do a poor job, but...
I, I think your points will take, I think we can come up with some general, I mean, I've even thought about, we might do a little prep work on some of the downtown locations. We know the size, the footprint, building values, acquisition, demo, and then, you know, the Hotel Convention Center, square footage, you know, if it's built east, west, or north, it's going to be the same.
Exactly.
You just got to have the footprint. So, I think we can, you know, we can do that. I just, there's a difference between that and fully vetted, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, right.
I was also curious, I saw that the Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau is here, and I was wondering if she had any insights on this? Did you want to talk? No? Yes? Just here to observe?
In response, as she comes up, what you expressed is what I had in mind. Not, not a fully vetted, but being able to bring together some, some costs that would, would be different based on the site, and I was hopeful that we, the city, could do some of that as well.
We can help.
And then test the temperature, what the community is willing, the cost they're willing to bear, to put it downtown, put it on the corridor, put it over here, put it there, whatever the case may be.
And, and, you know, to add to that a little bit, you know, just the cost, but again, it's, the, the developer that has the 120 rooms or 100 rooms, he wants those full. He wants an occupancy of 65%, and if he doesn't see that in this location, then he's not interested in finding somebody that will, or...
Well, and that was my comment, talking about having to subsidize...
Subsidize occupancy.
Rooms, potentially, in some sites, if, if the folks who do this kind of thing project a less-than-acceptable occupancy rate at one site versus another, so...
Well, and not that the developer couldn't go ahead with his plans to create a hotel at any location.
Right, now without it.
Forget the convention piece, but I think if I read the market study, right, we're desirous of rooms, you know, there's no question about that. So, maybe build your hotel out there, or not, or whatever. The convention piece could be separate of it, or something else. Again, I don't know. But I don't think this exclusivity agreement will prevent us from having options, is one thing, sorry, please.
No, man, not at all.
I will just say, my name's Leigh Ann Cox, I'm with Visit Hutch. Our Board of Directors, the Chamber Board of Directors, took this up at our May board meeting, and fully discussed the study, all the options that were included in it, the sites. All of those discussions were, were had very deeply by the entire board, and at the end of the day, it was voted unanimously to support the city signing this exclusivity agreement with Leisure Hotels. So that's the position of our, our organization. As far as the study goes, we did work with them, provide them information to help them kind of get the, the ball rolling. We provided contact information for demand generators, not only here in Hutchinson, but the meeting planners in Topeka, which, if you know the convention business, Topeka is where the meeting planners are based, and where those state associations come from to host their meetings across the state of Kansas. So those are the people we wanted them to be in, in discussions with, to get direct feedback. Don't, don't talk to us, don't talk to, you know, some of the other folks, but talk to those people that will place the convention business in our new convention center. So, in that respect, we, we helped them with that information. I think I could speak for both our chamber president, Deborah Tufel, who's out of town right now, and myself, when we say that the results of this study were not surprising at all to us. We felt like the K-61 corridor, with the amenities, with the other hotels, with the services and shopping and all of that, in that location, with the highway access, is the location that would be best suited to be successful for a developer to place a hotel in convention center. There really was not anything in the study that we found that was surprising, or that kind of took us aback at all, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's any questions?
I think it's important that we try to differentiate our thinking when we say convention center versus a boutique hotel. And I know we're just playing on words and so on, but there's concepts in terms of a convention center, 120-room, 20,000 square feet, versus a boutique hotel that we've seen developed in other communities. So, I think we need to make sure we differentiate between the two, that we really are analyzing the data that the market study outlined in terms of the scope of the project.
Yeah, because whether you like it or not, convention implies people coming with cars.
Yeah.
And you've got to figure that parking issue, and that's my conundrum with something downtown. The Baker was built, what, 1950?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. And as I recall, one of the biggest issues was it, with it, was the fact that there was no parking.
Yeah.
And so if you're really talking about a convention center downtown, personally, I think you're going to have to build a parking garage, and that's going to take big bucks, as we well know.
We know what those cost.
We know what those cost.
We know what those cost.
So, you know, I mean, I, you have to look at all, all the factors.
That's why I think we can, you know, do kind of a general idea of...
Yeah.
Land acquisition, cost, demo, parking facilities, and, you know, without asking Leisure to have to hire architects to do all that. And we'll work together on that, because they'll have information, but it'll, we'll have some general numbers that are important, so...
Do you expect them to be onsite, Leisure, with a team, or do you have some feel for that?
Yeah, I think, you know, Mr. Olson indicated a couple of people in his office that would probably be the leads on this, on this project as we go forward, so. And, you know, I said it, I think I said it at State of City, and it was mentioned earlier, we did it, last time the community did this was, what, 2003, 2004, and we need to get it right this time.
We need to get it right.
It's important that we do take our time and go through this, but it's also important that we move forward. And we've been, gotten in this discussion stage for almost a year, and really haven't gotten too far, so we need to move forward, because things, as you know, have deteriorated pretty significantly at the current facility and its time.
And make sure we let Leisure do their job.
Yes.
Yeah, we can't...
That we don't overshadow them, micromanage them. Let them do their job.
Well, I think as pointed out, if they're, you know, investing, you know, 15 million in, in a project, they're, they're going to decide what, what they're going to do, and, and our investment level, I mean, just know what we're dealing with, budget, property tax, and some people say, I don't worry about that, but I tend to worry about that. Our, our financial ability is fairly limited. You know, we've, we've talked about the bed tax, it's been dedicated there for some time, and that's a, that's a good starter for us, and I think helps maybe offset operational costs of a convention center for a company. And they worry about the hotel, they've got this to help with offset some of the operating costs for a period of time, and but beyond that, you know, we would be looking at essentially property tax that would, would subsidize it. I mean, there are other things, you know, the CIDs and things like that, but, you know, at the end of the day, that's not going to generate just a lot of money, so. So I do think we're limited in what public funds we're going to be able to dedicate to this, but again, that's not my call, that's, that's your call at the end of the day.
I'll also admit that people weren't just clamoring to come to Hutchinson to build a hotel and convention center, so kudos to Mr. Olson and their, their group for taking an interest and stepping up to the plate to at least come up with some conceptual ideas. But at the end of the six months, then we have another set of decisions to make.
Again, my question to all of us is, is six months sufficient in the agreement? And let it go there, or do we want a clause?
Would you delve into that extension clause?
Well, I'm just saying that in, in the document, whether or not there's a proviso that there's an ability to, to extend this agreement for an additional six months, or whatever designated period of time.
For both parties, or laterally, or who gets extended?
I think mutually.
Mutually?
That's... I think I understand where you're coming from, John, and yet I'd, I'd like to hold our feet to the fire.
That's right.
You know, if, if we're, if we're rolling, but six months, for whatever reason, comes up short, I, I would, I would think we could mutually agree, but...
That's fine.
I'd like, I'd like to hold our feet and, and Leisure Corp's feet to the fire and say, look, we, we've been at this for a year in one fashion or another, or more, not necessarily with them, but let's, let's push it and, and push to try to meet a deadline that we've kind of imposed, and if it becomes so arbitrary that we just have a need another 30 days or so, fine, we can, we can make that happen.
It would be great by, at the, the next tournament, by next, you know, March, we would be able to communicate to the NJCAA that this is our plan, so that, you know, we don't lose all that traffic permanently. Of course, the tournament's still going to be here, but if teams get in the habit of staying offsite...
Somewhere else, yeah.
We may lose them forever, but if they know this is a temporary situation, you know, just give us some time. I think we'll regain a little bit of confidence that we lost last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Good point.
Very good. Is there any more discussion, is there a motion?
Well, I would move to approve the exclusive negotiation agreement with Leisure Development LLC.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, please call the rule.
Deckard?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyros DiCarvalo?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes.
Next item.
Item 6B, Discussion of 2020 Capital Improvement Program.
Mayor and Council, this is a little unusual in that we're not having our normal study session on CIP projects that we've done over the years. We originally scheduled this discussion for a study session this Thursday, and in light of our relatively light agenda, we thought, why not just do it while we've got you all gathered today? So, as in past, basically, you know, we, city staff puts together a, a five-year capital improvement program, and with that includes our 2020 capital budget. And so, what we're going to do today is, with our department directors, just walk through the capital budget proposed for 2020, not really going to talk about years beyond. You have that information, if you've got questions about that, we can certainly address that. And, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we can just maybe start, you know, at the top, and really just kind of work our way down, this isn't really decision day or anything like that. And I will point out that, you know, we're early in the budget development process, none of these projects have been, there's been no projects cut, and as you can imagine, in past years, there'll be some of these projects that probably won't make the, the final budget, you know, when it gets right down to it, so keep that in mind as well, so.
And that's what, yeah, I thought we'd do the same. We'll start in the, the grade section there and work our way, item by item, through it, and to reemphasize what the manager said, this is what I like to refer to as the wish list. This is, not all this is going to get funded, but this is the first conversation about these items and the costs associated with those. Gives us a chance to visit with the department heads about how they arrived at the figures, maybe how pressing some of the items are. And then, once we exhaust the gray section, for those that had anything they picked out in any of the other sections, the capital reserve areas, then maybe we could touch upon those as well.
Okay, very good. Those first two downtown, Jim's still recuperating from his hip replacement, and he should be back.
Oh, I didn't know he had one.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's, he's going to be a new, new man when he comes back.
He should be doing the jig by now, shouldn't he?
Yeah. I think he's due back here in, in a week or a couple of weeks, but, so I won't be as passionate about these first two that he might be, but they are a couple of parking lots. The first one is rebuild and reconfigured Second Walnut Parking Lot. That's a parking lot adjacent to the old Carl's, and, you know, we've had conversations about that with development occurring in some of those buildings right there, nothing ever happened. That's a big project, and, and like I said, Jim's got that on his list. I think that's one of those that, you know, we need to really look at what's going to develop around there, but, I mean, it's a big, big project, $300,000, and I've driven it, you know, it's not used a lot right now.
It's a mess, that's why it's not used.
Pardon?
It's a mess.
Yeah, and it's part of that. It's got, you know, the island, so it does need, it does need to be reconfigured to be effective, and, and might help, you know, some of the congestion down there. The next parking lot is a resurfaced First and Washington, that's a parking lot just north of the First National Bank parking garage. I drove it the other day, it's in really pretty bad shape, and this would really just be a...
And that one is heavily used.
Yeah.
It's used, resurfacing, so, you know, just keep those in mind. But, you know, the, the, the second and Walnut, I think that's one of those that we really got interested in that, because we had a potential developer that was looking at some of those buildings to do some, the Leon specifically, a project that's been a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, that this would have been instrumental in terms of making available parking for that project, and then that never did happen, so we kind of lost a little bit of interest, interest in that. But the parking lot itself does need to be just cleaned up, it's kind of a mess.
John, have we always owned that?
You know, as far as I know, we have.
I guess I thought Carl's owned that.
No, no.
Well, I think that when we look at, you know, the Leon and Plaza Towers, which is also on the market, and the potential for projects in those two areas, it would probably be good on our side for, forethought, to do something with those, to make it more attractive for developers looking to...
Yeah.
How many spaces are even in that lot? To me, it's very, very small.
Well, that's part of the configuration of it, is just, yeah. I thought we had, we don't have the number in there. I'm going to guess it's probably 50 cars, maybe.
That many even?
Yeah, I think, if anybody lived, I remember in college, coming out of that side door of Carl's...
Oh, surely not.
And you were right in the driveline, and it was, I mean, it's, the way that thing's, you know, the, the driveway goes right up next to the building, it's a little bit dangerous, if you will, but, but, you know, it's got those islands in there, and it just makes it tough to maneuver in and around. Yeah, 50's probably too many, you're probably right.
It just seems really, really small, but I admit, I haven't been in it for quite a while.
And I don't, I haven't asked Jim on a priority, but, but, you know, just looking at what's being used now, the resurfacing of First and Washington, of course, it's a lesser cost, is probably something that may be a higher priority in my mind, but Jim may have a different thought. So, again, we're just kind of walking through these, and if there's any...
John, what's our, what's our target?
Well...
Target total.
Yeah, as, as we talk about some of these, I always like to look back at last year's CIP.
Last year's total was 16 million. Is that...
On total projects?
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, that's...
Twenty, excuse me, 2019 was 24 million.
Yeah.
Or this year's 24 million, almost 25.
But generally, as you look at, like, the general fund, you know, as we go down to the right, the general fund level there, the funding that comes directly out of general fund, you know, this year we've got in that top gray area, almost $600,000. Last year, we funded that at about 170. So that tells you, you know, what we did last year, cutting to get to that point. And so, bonding is, is something that we typically try to, to, you know, kind of maintain a certain level of bonding, and as we... certain level of bonding, and as we've talked in the past, you know, we've got debt coming off every year, and we don't want to really increase that too much, so you add to it. But but we bond projects, you know, every year, so. I think here, let me just look on bonding.
Last year or this year?
I was looking last year.
Excuse me, this year or next year?
So last year, we bonded roughly, let's see, about about five million.
Mm-hmm, five point two?
Yeah, five point two. And this year, general fund, general obligations, if you if you add the, well, sewer, but just in a general fund, about four point one, so. Yeah, so we'll want to, we'll want to keep an eye on that, try to kind of maintain those levels, because obviously, there's not going to be an increase in funding. But bonding, something, you know, that doesn't affect the mill levy that year, but it certainly does as we go forward, so.
John, just a more broad question. You know, we brought the Strong Towns group in to present to the community about a different way of looking at investment. And one of the things they advocated for was coming up with a real CIP program or instead of a wish list of projects each year, laying out the community's maintenance obligations on all infrastructure and what that looks like. And then going through and creating your CIP based on more of an ROI perspective, applying that lens of looking at all the maintenance we have to do on our infrastructure, what projects could we do that are going to provide the greatest return? Kind of like we did with the Parks Master Plan, which parks are lacking in amenities and we need to bring up. I don't know if if we've applied that lens that we were kind of schooled on through the Strong Towns. Or if or if we're just going to always go the wish list route. And and I'm fine either way. I don't know what's best for our community. I know this is all kind of theoretical, but I thought it made a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and we don't have the ROI model that that was discussed. I think during that visit, there was, I think, one community mentioned that that I was aware of that that actually practiced that down in Texas, I can't remember the name of the city and.
Fate.
Was it?
Fate, Texas.
Yeah, Fate, Texas.
Because they're taking control of their own fate.
Yeah. And, you know, some of that, I think, is easier easier targeted at new, you know, kind of the whole build a new subdivision.
I see what you're saying.
What's the total cost of that? What's the total long-term cost? You know, how you apply that to just say a resurfacing of a parking lot, I I don't, you know, I don't know. But I get, I get the concept of of a new subdivision, what that cost is today. And the city, you know, once we take that over, we own those streets, water and sewer, so we got to take care of them, what that cost is. You know, and then compare the revenue that we generate off that property, and, you know, is it a, is it a money loser?
Net positive or gain, yeah.
One of the fallacies of Strong Towns was they didn't really factor in sales tax. They factored in property tax. And we ask that question is, well, if you've got people, five people living in a house, they're not only paying property taxes, but they're paying sales tax, which represents more revenue for us than property tax. And so, you know, that that was a question that was brought up, and the comment was, well, Minnesota basically, pretty much all property tax. But so so you'd have to factor that all in, and we've kind of played with that a little bit on what that might look like on a new subdivision.
But it's hard to make it retroactive on a on an older community.
I mean.
I mean, I can appreciate you have a better perspective on it than I do.
No, I think it's a good point. I just probably somebody maybe smarter than me, which wouldn't be hard, figure out what that, you know, what that model would look like on a, you know, on a parking lot, on this parking lot project versus this one. Like, for example, the second and Walnut Parking Lot versus First and Washington, what's the ROI on that? Well, you know, there's no revenue from either one of them. You know, one is more heavily used today than the other one, so those would be kind of hard, but so.
I'd say, though, just because it's hard doesn't mean we shouldn't give it a, give it a whirl. I mean, I think that it it truly means a change in in some thinking or approach. We, in my opinion, we do it with streets. Engineering has measurement mechanisms and and tools that are used to to determine that if we put some money here now, it's going to, it's going to pay for itself. Not pay for itself, it's going to make the street last longer than waiting another five years and then having to double the money at that point in time. So I I I agree that Strong Towns tends to speak to new development. We're we're not going to be there for a long time, if ever, if ever, in terms of any significant new development. So I think we need to, if we're interested, and I think there is interest, we're going to need to develop some means to to apply those concepts in a way that that can be dealing with existing infrastructure and aging infrastructure and what gives us the best return, and maybe the return isn't always monetary.
Exactly. For instance, that parking lot that is, you know, at Second and Walnut, right now, not being used very much. But again, we have two buildings that are ripe for really cool projects. Should a developer come in? What could we do to make that area more attractive, to spur that development, that kind of?
That kind of thing?
Those kind of things, instead of, well, this one's twice as expensive and it's not used as often, so let's do this one. You know, I mean, on the surface, that makes sense, but let's let's just dive a little deeper about what we want our community to look like and how we can get there through things that look really basic, like redoing a parking lot, you know? I just feel bad that Jim's not here to advocate for his parking lot, so I got to do it for him, John.
The manager did pretty well.
We've done, we've done quite a bit in parking downtown.
We have, and we still have people complain about not enough parking.
And we we just redid a, you know, new parking lot on Avenue C that very, you know, not used very much.
Right.
Turn around in it a lot?
Well, I I I would, I mean, I I understand kind of where you're coming from. I I hope expectations are that this would be a future model.
Oh, yeah. I'm not saying go back and implement it this week and we'll have this conversation.
Next week will be okay, though.
But I I hear what you're saying, and I think we ought to always have those conversations, so.
And it's probably incumbent upon us to look at it through that lens as we're advising John during this process, not to revamp it today like you're, you know, you weren't suggesting, but yeah, but yeah.
Okay. Well, you ready to move on to?
Yes, groundwater remediation, I think.
We're going to have Joel, Joel Davenport, our superintendent of water and sewer. Brian's out this week, and so Joel has, was excited that he was able to stand.
Poor Joel.
Absolutely thrilled. So we're going to just kind of walk through these projects, and if you guys got questions, we'll go from there.
Yeah, Brian's on the beach, hadn't had enough water here, so. Farmland J Groundwater Remediation Project is basically KDHE-driven, part of the Fourth and Carey Project. Carbon tetrafluoride contamination in that area, and this is for some actual chem, trying to make this process faster. So this is basically just a test project, and if it works, then we're looking at about a million dollars additional in future years to help clean up that area faster. Farmland J is a half-mile-long elevator on Halsted.
So we, and we mentioned this with our Brian a couple of weeks ago with the contract with Burns McDonald. He noted that, so.
Right, so.
What do we, remind me what we spend currently annually on that remediation project? It's substantial, isn't it?
It's one of those things that we're not going to get away from.
Well, but if we have a way to speed up.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I mean, if we could clean it up in ten years as opposed to thirty, it might make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll come up with that number for you.
Yeah.
Test project, could you say a little more? Is that, we're not sure if this will, we're wanting to find out, will this work more effectively, efficiently?
Theoretically.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's a test project.
It's worked somewhere else.
Yeah.
We we may do it. We may find out that it doesn't do any better or doesn't do as well as what we're already doing, and we'd abandon it, or it may, on the other hand, do better, faster.
Instead of jumping in and putting a whole million dollars in.
Yeah.
It's basically like a pilot study.
Okay.
From that standpoint.
So real quick, in, yeah, in seventeen, we spent about a quarter of a million dollars, but we have budgeted in nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, about half a million. Do you recall, we were receiving about four hundred thousand dollars a year from the TIF that was really paying for that, and and obviously, that wasn't renewed. And so now that is directly paid out of the water fund.
Could we go back and try to put in a new one?
Probably could.
I mean, I don't know whether they would be any more receptive, but.
Probably not.
Well, you have a different administration.
Yeah, it was just unfortunate.
You got to have all entities.
Similar board members, though. Not a lot of member on the on the three oh eight side.
Well, not all of them.
Yeah, not all of them.
Okay.
All right, thank you, and let's see, Water Tower Two.
Water Tower Two, this is a maintenance project. The last time it was painted was in two thousand and three. And in addition to the coating on the tower, which we inspect them every three years. A company comes in, inspects the paint, inspects the inside coating, and makes recommendations based on the conditions that they find. And the paint is starting to chalk on the outside from the exposure to the sun. And on the inside, you start getting rust spots inside, and you don't want that to affect your water quality. So this is just a, it's been fifteen, actually sixteen years since it was last done, and this will be seventeen years by next year. So Tower Three will follow the following year, so we're doing Tower One this year, Tower Two next year, and Tower Three.
Remind me where that's at.
Tower Two is northwestern and two lane, so it's in the northwest part of town.
Right.
So it's a half-million gallon spherical water tower up there. We also proposed to put a fence around that. We've had some issues with vandalism in the area. Most of the vandalism are actually people like their four-wheelers driving around it, so. It includes a black vinyl coated chain link fence around the tower, so people and kids aren't messing around with it. There are, there is also the possibility of ice forming on it in the wintertime and and falling, and we have signs posted for that, but and it's all locked all the time, but so you can't get, nobody can get into the tower unless they have a master key with the bolt cutters, but and it's also alarmed if somebody tried doing that, so.
And and those two projects are being funded out of reserves, I think, on your charge of sales tax, and that, we just need to move those over.
Oh.
They'll be out of water reserves, yeah.
So those two are the key for the, or the, for that.
Okay. Have we started the the Water Tower One coating project this year?
The consultant is working on it. They have some, they're working on the final verbiage with Paul. And so they're waiting on him to, you know, get the contract finalized to go out for.
I noticed that we had a lot of four hundred and twenty-five thousand for this year's work on on Water Tower One, and and you're looking at two twenty-five. A little, just slightly more than half for for this one. Can you talk about the difference between the two towers?
Million gallon tower versus a half-million gallon tower?
Okay. Takes care of that?
Yeah. So Tower One is the one over here at Adams and.
Right, okay.
And so it's also has multiple columns and just size.
Size, all right, good enough, thank you. I mean, I'm glad to see less, but didn't know the why.
And Tower Three is identical to Tower Two, and that's the one at Halsted and Eleventh, or Seventeen, yeah, Eleventh.
Eleventh and Halsted.
The sewer rehab Halsted, that's sanitary sewer?
Yeah, it's sanitary sewer, and it's from the wastewater plant west to US fifty. It's forty-eight inch line, and it's actually across agricultural land at Pancrat's' own. Across there, and over the years, it's, they've had implements go across it, punched a few holes in it. So that's the purpose of that rehab, plus there's some manholes, you know, every, what, three to five hundred feet that need rehab on it from H2S degradation over the years. So that pipeline's been in there a long, long time.
How deep is it?
It's right at basically the surface. I mean, it's just, you can actually see it.
When I read that there had been holes punched, I said, my gosh.
It may be a foot.
Wow.
You know, so he's, he tries to be careful going across it, but, you know, when you're handling big, large implements across there and farming, it's.
Are you going to put it deeper, I hope?
What's that?
Are you going to put it deeper this time?
Can't put it deeper because we depend on gravity to get.
Gravity flow.
Get down there.
Thanks for the clarification.
So, yeah. And speaking of, well, we'll, they'll talk about the wastewater side, but we have been handling a huge amount of water over the last. Three weeks, and we haven't had the problems that Haven and and First had.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
And that's just just groundwater, rain, stormwater getting in our shorelines.
It's what we call I and I, which is infiltration and inflow. So sump pumps hook to the sewer system, and it's probably the largest thing. Which aren't supposed to be.
Any other questions of Public Works or any of these projects that were mentioned?
I'll be back, looks like.
Okay, yeah. Take a break. Okay, Justin? No, wait.
No, Jeff.
Jeff. Jeff. Oh, you got it. Eleventh and, yeah.
That's a big ticket item.
Yep, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. This this one actually is Eleventh Avenue, we have it from, it's really from Main Street to the Harsher Canal. And this is, isn't a total re, well, it says total reconstruct, there's portions of it that would be totally reconstructed. There's some portions of it that would just be mainly curb and gutter work. It's kind of a mixture of about everything we we do, so. It's been on our five-year plan for quite some time, and it's just, it's, it's, well, if you've driven Eleventh west of Main Street, you can, there's some of the gutters grow grass better than some of the adjacent properties, so.
Does it align itself with the, what we learned from the the study?
It it does, but this was put on before we got, we haven't got all the final results yet. It's, it's, it's been needing it in different locations, yes. It, there's portions of it that 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 do align itself, there's portions of it that they don't really take into account the gutter conditions and things like that. They more take care of the the surface. So portions of it are under brick, portions of it are just asphalt, so there's a whole host of different things along that corridor, so.
Would this also include any sidewalk work in that area?
There would be some sidewalk work, yes.
This two point six, is that your engineering estimates internally?
It is, it's, it's very preliminary at this time. We haven't did, we need to do some soil boring and some other things, just to to see exactly, exactly how much it would be. It's, it's kind of based on some past ones, but this one's more of a kind of a hybrid project as as opposed to some of the others that we've had, what we call total reconstructs, so.
Big project.
Yeah, it's a very big project.
Yeah, big project.
And it might end up going in phases, just depending on how the next phase of Main Street goes, so we don't have two.
Going on at once.
Yeah.
Too many counts.
One of the things I want to add, and Mayor and I were talking about this yesterday, and then Jeff and I, I know in your budget retreat, we talked about, you know, sidewalk improvement program. And there's nothing specifically related to that, but one of the things, because there's a lot of ideas out there, and, you know, we've, we've had the sidewalk subsidy program before, and, you know, this house takes advantage of it, this one doesn't. And so one thought I had was that as we do projects like this, or every year on our arterial collector project, like, for example, last year, we did Severance from Fourth North up to Eleventh, I believe. And we didn't do sidewalks, but in the future, when we do those projects, projects, it's going to add cost, we do sidewalks. And the idea that you're impacting an area all at once and not here and there, and they are arterial collectors, which, you know, is generally used by a lot more people than just the people that live there. Now, not to say that there's not other programs, but if we're ever going to make an, you know, progress on the sidewalk side of things, that's just one way to do it. I'm just thinking out loud here as we go forward, so.
And we did identify that as a one need of the community, to fix the sidewalks, and how do you do that on a piecemeal basis? If you're going to have a project of this size and scope, yeah, why not?
Just do it.
Just do it.
And and then the whole connectivity with, you know, the trail system and, you know, keeping that in mind as well. But 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 that's an idea to, you know, kind of address the issue.
I can say, if you've, if you've driven or the Main Street, there's portions that we've actually kept sidewalks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not.
That we're in good shape.
That we're in good shape, and there's places we've. That we're in good shape, and there's places we've replaced, so it's not a. For the most part, things are replaced, but there are portions that, that are in pretty good shape right now, so. They may not be the same on these other projects, I'm not saying that, but.
I really like that idea. I noticed that going east on Eleventh. You see kids riding their bikes, young kids, to school.
East on Eleventh.
Yeah, on Eleventh, you know, when you go all the way to the highway, there's like, there's nothing.
That's a bad corridor, right? Yeah, you're right.
We do, we do, when we do the reconstruct types things, we typically do sidewalks. When we've done the residential, well, not residential, but the arterial, we haven't typically done sidewalks. We've just done ADA ramps and those types of things. So to date.
So that, that's just an idea.
If we did that on Main Street now, we might not be able to fund Main Street on what we're doing this year for the, for the arterial. Because there's, we could have more sidewalks than we, we think on that part, but most of it's pretty good.
I'd say keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
As you're identifying these projects, I would suggest, yeah, ones that definitely have bad sidewalks, maybe specific streets that lead to schools, when they're being worked upon, identify those so they have a safe passage. Things like that.
What part of Main Street are we doing now again this year?
Fifth to Thirteen. And it's, it's not out to bid yet, that's, it should be pretty soon.
Will that finish that?
It will finish that.
From downtown north?
Just in time to start over up on the north end. Not quite, but.
Go further south.
We'll be gone.
Okay, anything else on that?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Justin, you've been patient.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. So do we have just a PowerPoint just to go with this to help show some images of some of these projects? I do have a lot of them, so I'll try to go relatively quick. First one is ADA playground replacement at Rice Park for seventy thousand dollars. You can see the, the main structure, if I had to guess, was probably built late nineties, early two thousands. And then some of the other components are well older than that. This is one of our few playgrounds that's set up with nodes, so we have a small central structure. We have a swing set, we have another swing set, we have a dome climbing feature. So we keep that layout just with, with new equipment. Adventure Park slash Bike Park.
Justin, are that, is that equipment reusable, sellable? I mean, just look at the picture, it doesn't look like it's in terrible shape. Maybe the picture's not giving a good.
Yeah, it's not necessarily sellable to get rid of it. We've explored that option in the past and we've always been advised that if we sell or give away playground equipment, we then become the manufacturer of that, we become liable for any ATSM standards or anything that change. I know the climbing.
So we destroy it, huh?
We, basically we have to scrap it, yeah. The climbing dome no longer meets safety standards. One of the swings does not, I'm not sure about the other one. The main structure, it's usable. There is quite a bit of vandalism, you know, just graffiti and people have over the years etched stuff into it. There's a, a missing panel, you can see there kind of in the, in the center. There used to be some sort of play panel there that's missing, so.
It just seems, you know, I understand the whole legal liability thing, but gosh darn, it just seems to be such a waste. I know that equipment is probably ten times better than what I grew up using.
Oh, absolutely.
And for the most part, I'm here.
Well, I think, I think probably the issue is what entity wants it if it doesn't meet the current safety and.
Yeah, I don't know. My backyard, no, I don't wear my backyard.
I do get that request from individual homeowners, like, hey, can I put that in my backyard? Sorry, you really can't.
We can look into that, but I think that's.
You know, I mean.
Waste not, want not.
Son of a gun, I mean, I realize it may not cross every T and dot every I, but if I, if I'm willing to just say, I'll take it off your hands, can I have it? But you're telling me I can't even, can't you set it in the curb and let me steal it from you or something?
I think we can review that, if it was laying in the parking lot and somebody stole it, then fine, it's fine.
I do know of programs where they will ship old playground equipment overseas. So there's nonprofits or church organizations that will take playground equipment, take it to Haiti or someplace that, that are beyond their reach of the US standards.
Well, then maybe, you know, I hate to think that we're dumping it on somebody, but there's gotta be some usefulness for it rather than just turning it into scrap metal and, and the, I forget the word you used, but that structure with the plastic. I mean, that's, that's junk. It's just, I mean, if you, if it's scrap, it can't even be recycled, I would imagine.
There is a little bit of steel in there and all, the posts and some of the guardrails are steel.
Okay.
The next item is adventure slash bike park design. So this is a site across the street from Fun Valley, the old water slide site. I'm also showing a picture of the river, a very high level of the river, that was taken just a couple of days ago. That we incorporate a, an improved canoe launch with this site. Through the master plan process, we heard kind of that team group say that, that there's no amenities that really address their recreational needs. And so this site would, would do that. The original idea for this site was actually an off-road mountain bike site, so using the terrain of the hill to develop a really unique downhill opportunity in, in Kansas. The, the folks that did the master plan, their ideas were more along the ideas of a ropes course or something like that. Or could it be a blend of the two? This would, would really be design and feasibility study of what, what could we do for this type of amenity at this site.
So as this adventure park design concept progresses to a point of saying, we like the design, so on, does this then become a function of the city to ultimately build this? Or is it a private sector that RFPs go out for? How, how might that work?
I think the idea of doing an RFP for a private company to come in and build this, I think are honestly pretty slim. I mean, that model has worked in places like Dallas. Dallas just did a great big one. We can explore that in a feasibility study. But my original idea for this was really more of an off-road to a mountain bike style course that would, would be similar to the skate park. You just come and go at your own risk. We have signs posted, you know, we, we maintain it at a minimal level, but we don't go in and staff it and, you know, tell people you can't use the park if you don't have a helmet on. We'll have signs that say that was the original idea, so. And again, this would kind of explore is what's the right mix? The reason I like the bike park is personally, I am a mountain biker and to, to ride a, a trail anywhere close, I either have to go to Wichita, Lindsbergh, or Great Bend. There is no place legally to ride mountain bikes in Reno County. Also with the hill, we could do something very exciting that would attract folks from Wichita first, from surrounding communities to come here and use that. And then we have the Fun Valley directly across the street. So then we're hoping that, you know, as people participate in tournaments, like, oh, what's this hill with these bike trails on it? Maybe we'll come back or, or we'll start bringing their bikes and using those facilities while they're here for tournaments, so.
To, to piggyback, I'd sure be interested, because I remember him saying something about private development. And then maybe it is a much larger metropolitan area that could do that, but I'd, I'd be interested in that being part of the feasibility consideration.
It has worked in other communities, will it work here? I don't, I can't answer that question, but we could definitely look into that through this study.
Before you move on to the next item, I appreciate your thinking. I noticed that down the road a few years, there's projected in twenty twenty-three fifty thousand dollars for Memorial Hall feasibility. And, and you're thinking, or you're thinking as to that timing. That, and I guess I'll, I'll speak a little bit, but Memorial Hall's been with us and we've wondered what are we gonna do for years? And, and the idea comes through the park of feasibility, park study of the adventure park. And we've got it in our, our next, our next year potential expenditure request.
So, so the bike park's been in the CIP for three or four years.
Has it, my oversight.
The idea of the adventure park is new, it's a combination with the bike park. As far as the feasibility for Memorial Hall, that's really something, I, I didn't feel like we were ready to tackle that in twenty twenty, but we needed to get it on our, on our watch list for the next, next five years. And we have kicked that can down the road for a long time on what the best use of Memorial Hall is. You know, if, if twenty-three's not the right time, if we need to bump that up, we can. It's really just, just to get it on the five-year plan to have this discussion about, about timing of that, so. As far as the building goes, can we continue to operate for the next three or four years? As we have been, yes, we can. You know, we, assuming we don't have any major mechanical issues or anything, we can kind of just status quo until the time is right to do the feasibility.
I'd, I'd like to pose to us that we keep that in mind and maybe consider moving that up. We've, we've, as Justin mentioned, kicked the can down the road a long time. And fifty thousand to do a feasibility to, to maybe get us off-center. It might be that, that the feasibility would say, you know, that, that just isn't worth the time, effort, and money. And, and, and so we make a decision whether or not to go that road. Or, hey, here's some real doable or feasible things. I'd rather not wait another four years to, to get to that point, when for, how long ago was it that we had the vote and the community said, let's keep the building? Ten years or more now.
In the eighties.
I'd like to see us getting off of center and not kicking the can down the road anymore in regards to Memorial Hall, at least coming up with some feasibility or unfeasibility related to that building.
Well, in six months, it could be your new convention center.
Yeah, I kind of like that.
Well, if, if we perchance put the feasibility study into next year, we'd hopefully be making that decision before that money would be expended for a feasibility study.
Well, Justin, the other feasibility study that was discussed in the master plan was the aquatics. I, I didn't see that on here. And we're getting ready to pay off the bond for that, or did we? Is that this year or next?
I think nineteen's the last.
It's the last year, so we need a plan. Are we gonna keep dumping money into that, or are we gonna?
We, yeah, we need to study that. We need to, I, I think location, according, according to Hutrec, according to our, to our consultants, location is, is the biggest problem. So, yeah, it, probably within the next year, yeah, we probably do need.
But that wouldn't be something for the CIP, that would just be out of the general budget, or would that be a cost share?
I would most likely want to share that fifty fifty with Hutrec and be in that. In that fifty thousand, fifty to sixty thousand dollar inch total cost.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we're gonna continue to spend money on investing in the infrastructure down there. Just to make sure it's right, you know.
Have, since now we're talking swimming pools, have we evaluated the, the pricing associated with entry and things like that in a while?
Hutrec looks at that every year. I think it was two years ago, they, they did a significant increase in the, in the fees. The next item is just the maintenance of Cary Park roads and parking lots. So it's really two projects and one, one is the Cary Park fishing pond road, so it's a road that goes around the fishing pond. You can actually see some of the degradation of the road from the aerial photograph. That road is really rough shape. So this would be a mill and resurface and then some grading work of that road, as well as a complete mill and resurface of Stremel parking lot. So the image on the right is Stremel parking lot. Neither one of those were actually true asphalt roads, so they were asphalt millings that were put down over time and compacted. And then we put seal coat over the top. So this would really use that existing asphalt as a base and then we put a hot mix asphalt over the top of them.
What's the distance from, from either entry point's end to the, to the middle of the, the? Well, in this, in this photo, it would be the lower portion of that road. Is that a hundred yards, several hundred yards?
Yeah, it's probably two hundred yards, I would say, between where you enter and then to the, just as you drive down to where you make that initial curve here, so I can get the.
Well, here's where I'm going or thinking, why, why do we have a drive at all? Folks who may have some mobility issues would not have to go all the way to the bottom portion, could fish off of either end. Why not have it just be a walking path, walking trail rather than a vehicle trail?
Currently, our ADA fishing dock is right here, so we would have to move that. But, yeah, that, that, we could look at that option, just maintaining this as an actual vehicle road and then keeping this more as foot traffic.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
It's not indifferent than what they have at the Riversbank Orchard Park where it's paved on the one side.
Right, right.
And I've seen people utilize both sides.
Granted, it would, would require the relocation of the ADA accessible dock, but I would assume over time it'd certainly be money ahead.
Costly, yeah, that's a great idea.
Very good.
Good point.
This project is Fun Valley restroom remodel. I know we did talk a few weeks ago about funding this through the Orchard Park building money that we have available, but I still wanted just to keep it on here, it's, it's on the list for twenty twenty. Just wanted to keep it out kind of in the forefront. And these restrooms are in, are in really, really rough shape. I did receive updated cost estimates, actually yesterday. The prices is really, we're, we're closer to two hundred than, than the two fifty for this. The two fifty was the initial cost from an architect and then we, we did some refining of that, so. So that would replace all four, so there's two women's, two men's restrooms in the main center complex. And according to Hutrec, and I, I truly believe that this is the number one complaint they get, is the restrooms and then along with the bleachers.
Now, we're doing the bleachers this year, correct?
Correct, we are. I'm hoping any day to.
Rolling?
Yes, I'm hoping any day to get the design back so we can bid that out.
But we did, we did talk about, you know, the Orchard Park pavilion. And this would be a project that we would redirect that bond money possibly for this.
I, I had to leave before that discussion took place, I think I read some minutes or notes about that.
Maybe a, a downsized open pavilion, Fun Valley restrooms.
And then roughly half of the bleachers.
So we'd only have to bond the other half.
So we don't have to bond three hundred and fifty or something.
So this one could move on a little quicker.
And that's something I wanted, I want to bring formally to, to council, hopefully next meeting.
So this would be knocked off?
This, this would be knocked off of, of this list, yeah.
Right.
But since it was still on the spreadsheet, I want to keep the project out in front of everyone.
I don't know about the women's restroom, but the men's restroom is the pits and my guess is the women's is probably as a pity.
You want to just do the men's?
I wasn't suggesting or implying or inferring that at all. I, I'm saying I've not been in the women's restroom.
I'd be happy to give you a tour if you ever.
You know, we've been talking about this for at least six years, so as far as I'm concerned, this is like number one on my list.
The only other thing that is brought up besides the bleachers, besides that, is the parking lot. I didn't see it in the, this one, where we had in that conversation or.
We looked at that a few years ago to, to do the parking lot right, so to come in and mill and resurface everything are about a half million dollars. I'm not sure if we have a half million dollars to invest in a facility, that that's the wisest choice. What we can do and what Don and I've talked about is maybe in the next year or two, come in and do another slurry seal, fill in some of the potholes, do some grading work and repaint some of the stripes. So it's just kind of continue to add, add a Band-Aid to it, but it, it's such a large parking lot.
How about, how about abandoning it as an asphalt lot and just make it a gravel lot and?
Yeah, we talked about that one year.
And just maintain.
Do what we can, yeah, maintain a gravel lot.
We can, we can explore that idea, I mean, we'd have to grind what's there and then haul in material. And there is quite a bit of ongoing maintenance with grading those and keeping so they drain properly.
And do they utilize the, when, when you have a full tournament out there? Are they, yeah, are they utilizing it in its entirety?
In a big tournament, yeah.
A big tournament to do.
For league night, like, like last night, we played out there about a third, one half to a third of the parking lot.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it almost full with the big tournaments.
I was wondering if you could put an emphasis on the up front parking, the close parking, a third of the lot.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we did a few years ago, was we, we slurry sealed the front, the first half or first third of it, graded it and finished that, mainly just for those, those parents that are coming out, you know, every Monday or every Wednesday and have a better place to park than, than the one-time, you know, weekend term.
As long as it's fully paved like it is, there's gonna be an expectation that it's maintained and there's not enormous potholes, so I think anything we could do to move away. So, I think anything we could do to move away from having a completely improved parking lot, because we just don't, we can't afford to maintain it.
It's a big expense. I hate to suggest this, it was done at the sports arena, but there was a user fee program implemented as a possibility over time, over multiple years, in order to help offset the paving, upgrading of the parking lot itself.
You know, if there was some alternative to that parking lot, I'd like that idea. But unfortunately, you know, the sports arena, I can choose city streets and walk whatever distance. Unfortunately, out there, there isn't an alternative.
No, there is no alternative.
You know, of course, I've talked about user fees in other arenas before. It's, I think it's something to keep in mind.
For years, we had the Fun Valley gate entrance that every participant, every fan paid.
Would you still do that for tournaments?
No, I meant the, there was a gate. For the league people, there was a gate fee, and we, a member of the group came to the city council and wanted that away. And it was for improvements like, it was just part of the revenue source. I don't remember, it was.
Dedicated or not.
Thirty to fifty.
Some kind of a dedicated.
It was probably.
We don't have a lot of opportunities for recreation for young people. Let's, I would try to avoid adding any additional costs to that. Especially if we have the opportunity to just make it cheaper to maintain.
What do we tend to charge admission for the, or what does rec commission charge for the tournament admission fee? I should know, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I think they're around four dollars for an adult, two dollars for a child. It could be off by one, it could be five and three, but it's in that ballpark.
Didn't mean to take us off, but it was on topic, off topic, Fun Valley related, so thank you for addressing that.
Next item is for design of the GVI Trail, the extension from Monroe to Plum. This was the project we applied for the KDOT Transportation Alternative Grant, and the feedback we got from KDOT was there were still a lot of design details that needed to be worked out until they were comfortable funding that. So, this would just get that project fully designed, give us a solid cost estimate, and then we could determine what the best way to fund it, whether it's internally or continue to go after grants.
So, those KDOT grants, what percentage do they typically pay? Is it ninety?
It was either ninety or eighty, I think it's a ninety.
And this would count toward our, would this count toward our public?
It would not. Design fees do not count. And I did not build, and I don't believe I built in then construction in the following years. It was, let's figure out what it's going to cost, those sorts of things, and then we can have the conversations about, do we? There will be, KDOT Alternative, Transportation Alternative Grant went away, but I'm sure there's going to be some sort of replacement for it, there generally is.
So, talk a little bit about what's currently there and what this would connect to.
So, right now, the trail ends at Plum, ends or begins, whichever way you want to look at it. There is a trailhead there. And so, we would really address the crossing of Plum, which is one issue that KDOT had. And then we are proposing the trail would go on the, on the north side of the GVI, which gets it away from the residents that were concerned with the privacy issues. This little spur you're seeing right here then would connect down to the neighborhood. There already is an easement there in place for that spur right there. And then we would continue on to Monroe. We have had lots of talks, conversations with Heartland Credit Union, which this is their facility here, and they're excited about the project. They're actually in the process of redoing some of their parking lots, and so, we've asked them to at a minimum show in their drawings where this trail would cut through their property. They want it on their property, and they actually want to connect it to their parking lots, and have even offered to mark a couple stalls, four or five stalls with trail use parking only. So, we'd almost have a trailhead right there.
So, as we work through this process, is KDOT really saying, Hutch, you need to resolve this question of the alignment, or has that been resolved going north of the GVI and so on? Has that been resolved because of the conflict with the neighbors and so on?
Their main concern was the crossing of Plum and what that would look like.
Okay.
And then, right here is a low water bridge, and so, they were concerned about what that would look like and what the elevation would be, and those sorts of things. And those were details we did not have, because we hadn't had a design, so they were just kind of conceptual in nature. As well as what would the connection down here at Heartland Credit Union look like? So, there were just too many kind of conceptual things in there. They didn't have the hard design to look at and say, okay, this street crossing won't work because of this. It was just, we're going to cross somewhere on Plum. When we have it fully designed, we'll let you know. Obviously, they're not going to fund it. And we didn't have the funding at the time to spend fifty thousand dollars on a full design. It's kind of a chicken or egg type thing, so.
So, this is about, what, thirty-fifth, thirty-sixth? What cross street are we, for people who don't know what the GVI is?
So, this is forty-third up here.
So, it's about thirty.
Thirty-third, I think.
Thirty-third?
Thirty-third, thirty-fourth, yeah, right in there.
Yeah, maybe thirty-five.
Right above Kisselaw North.
Yeah, that's right.
And like you suggested, regardless of the outcome, if we apply for the grant again, we'll own the plan. It'll be designed, it'll be, and then we can choose to fund it today, tomorrow, the next day.
Correct. We'll have a better idea of the total construction cost and how do we proceed with it.
Well, and that trail on, you know, the east side of Plum, that's extensive. I mean, that connects a large piece of the trail. So, it's not just piecemeal throughout the key manatee.
Correct. And this is, this is a key step to connect kind of a northwest loop. I mean, ultimately, we'd like to get, whether it's true off-street facilities like this multi-use trail, or whether it's on-street facilities, but connect to Rice Park.
Yeah.
Which then connects you to Jim Martinez Trail. Which can then get you all the way to Cary Park, so.
What is that, does that connect to anything on the east at this point, or will it, I should say?
There is some sidewalks over here.
Wait a minute, is that west or east right there?
That's west. On the east, there's another trail.
That's another trail right there.
Yeah, this is, this is the end, I guess, or the beginning of the GVI trail right now.
Okay, so that's existing trail.
To the hospital.
Yeah, Plum Creek and all into there.
The next item is Southwest Bricktown Development. We've done quite a bit at Southwest Bricktown, primarily all through private funding. I was trying to think how much we've had private funding come in to this development. Just off the top of my head, I think we're in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range. So, you can see the playground. We're currently constructing this piece of the trail, it kind of comes up around and to the north, so kind of this half loop here. So, what this project would do would finish the trail here, and then replace all this as sidewalk, would address an ADA non-compliant ramp here, and then all the turf work here. You know, one of the big things that Everhood wanted was just a nice open field to play frisbee, baseball, soccer, whatever. So, this would do all the grading work and irrigate the entire site, but primarily focused on creating this non-programmed athletic field. We'd also do some of the detail work, some of the, like, right now, the trail is just going to dive right into the existing sidewalk, but then that would allow us to do kind of this entry plaza with some landscaping. We have some other brick detail throughout the park. Really, this would just finish the park. You know, we've been, we've been working on this park for several years now, again, with basically all private money. So, this would really bring this, this project to an end, so we can move on to bigger and new things.
That equipment that's in the photo is where on the site plan?
It is right here, right in the center of the park, just south of the old easement, the old alley that used to be here. And we abandoned that, so this is all one continuous site now.
That is really becoming a nice park.
If we can get the old Sears building to develop into a convention center, then, you see what I keep doing there? Is there any other questions about the Bricktown development? And Justin, I might also ask, are you going to continue with Zoo, the Zoo conversation, or is somebody else going to do that?
I'm here for all of it.
You are?
Peter's here to help me with the tough airport.
With airport, okay. I'm going to pull rank here, because you're about to lose my full concentration if I don't take a break. So, I apologize for prolonging anything.
No, thank you.
But it's ten thirty-seven, maybe we get back at ten forty-seven or something like that. Would that be adequate? Apologies, but thank you. Coffee.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, next project is a nature playground at the zoo. Um, this is a project we've talked about before with our land water conservation fund and grant application that we submitted. Uh, I do hope to hear back within probably two weeks on whether that project was moved from the state to the National Park Service. Um, generally, if the state recommends it to the National Park Service, it generally gets funded. Um, the state has control over that. Um, so hopefully we'll know, um, I'm hoping by the end of this week or next week, if that project was moved on. Um, so seventy-five thousand dollars is, uh, twenty-five percent of this project.
Okay.
So the other funding then fifty percent would come from the grant and then the other twenty-five percent would come from Friends of the Zoo.
Okay. So again, what was the date on that that we'll know?
Uh, we should know within probably two weeks. I'm hoping by the end of this week, that might be a touch early, but maybe by the end of next week.
Okay.
The state has a deadline and when they review everything and they submit, um, the grants they would like to award to the National Park Service, so.
Well, Justin, that's the fourth of, um, four of your projects, requested projects that would come out of the general fund that wouldn't be bonded. Um, if you had to prioritize one of those or de-prioritize one of those, which one would it be? Would it be the adventure park?
Yeah, this one would be the easiest to move out of the general fund, um, because we do have a zoo reserve that's funded through revenue. We generate out the zoo, um, that would, and I believe we're at, um, a little over ninety thousand dollars in that reserve. Plus, we have, um, some rebate money from the credit card, huh, from the old Hutch Card program that we used to use, so. Um, so we could move where this one is funded from, uh, and out of, out of the general fund, so.
Good question.
Cause we're looking at hitting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar target?
Hundred and seventy last year and we've got about six hundred, so. There's, I mean, if you're just looking at general fund dollars, you're talking about, you know, two, you know, four hundred some thousand cuts. And as I mentioned earlier, as I prepare my proposed budget, I've already talked to Justin about some of these that I would not recommend. But again, the council will be able to make that call when the time comes.
Yeah, it's a process we go through every year. We, you know, if money wasn't an object, these are all the projects, maintenance and new projects we'd love to do. And then typically they get prioritized before you guys see the first, first round of it, but they show, we're showing you everything, so.
Yeah.
Then the other question I had is on the GO bonds that fall off, the amount that falls off this year that would, we would be willing to put in CIP this year.
We pay off five million in nineteen.
Oh, okay, so we're well within.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could probably bond a little bit more if we needed to, but some of these projects were so small, I'd just put them in general fund.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So five million falls off.
And we only have four one questions.
Last year, yeah, last year we bonded about a total of two million in projects compared to what's being requested here.
Oh, okay.
You mentioned that these were small items you put in the general fund. Is there ever a time and place where you lumped them together, grouped them and bond them, uh, as a package, if you will?
That's what we typically do.
Yeah. So we can get there from there if you wanted to.
This was just very preliminary.
Sure, sure, sure.
So you're saying we need to cut in half the requests?
More than that, if we're gonna be close.
Just that general fund.
No, I mean, on the, on the GO bond, if we were to match what we did last year.
If you were, if you were bonding similar to what we did in the past, yeah. Uh, but, you know, it's a little bit different. We got, you know, the, the Harshick Canal is two point six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But see, last year, we had, uh, well, last year we had two point, a little over two million for Woody Seed.
Yeah.
So. We might be all right there hearing the, the numbers that have come off, um, and not have to do a lot on that side of the equation.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, you said two million, but I, are you just looking at the, uh, general fund bonding, uh?
Yes, just general fund, not, not sewer fund.
Not sewer funds.
Or, or charter ordinance or anything?
Or water.
No, it'd be anything charter ordinance related or general fund.
Okay. Well, we had, we, we had three million in addition, um, charter ordinance, um, bond funding last year as well.
Sherman Walnut, Cary Park, McQueen Fields, Gulf Master.
So didn't we have more?
We had LEC.
A little over five million that we bonded last year?
Last year or this year, I guess nineteen.
Or, or for nineteen, excuse me, for, for this current year, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I would.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at, uh, yeah, so it would have been, yeah, it'd been.
Five two?
Five two, yeah, I, I was looking at the wrong this year's chart, five two, and that had the LEC in it. Um, I mean, that had, you know, had not only LEC, it had Woody Seed and LEC. So we had two big projects.
Two big projects, yep.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we're gonna wanna look at what that long-term impact is on bond interest fund, so.
All right, ready?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next project is for zoo electrical upgrades, um, as well as some pathway lighting on the main pathway. Um, so this is primarily really just a maintenance project, just to upgrade the electrical systems throughout the zoo. Um, we're really working at max capacity in, in, um, all of the buildings. Um, so this would just upgrade to a modern, um, electrical system. This, as we've expanded the zoo building by building, we've just kinda keep adding to our system. Um, so this would be a complete rework, um, of the electrical system, as well as would add some, some pathway lights along the, the main pathway. Um, and the reason we would like to do that is for evening events, um, those sorts of things that are becoming more unpopular, popular at the zoo, whom we already host a few now. Um, so, so this would make those events, um, a little easier to, um, to put on, so.
Uh, I asked engineering, I'll ask you the same, do these identified parks facilities recommendations align themselves with the, uh, the green play study that we just, um?
Yes.
Put together?
Yeah, yeah, just in particular, you know, for this, this project, um, the zoo rate is very high as far as the facility that people used and a facility that they were happy with the condition and the offering. So this is just, just really continues to maintain the zoo and gives us the ability to continue to grow and do new things there.
Uh, and, and the other items as well, the ADA playground equipment, we discussed the adventure park recourse, but those also were some of the, uh, recommended, uh?
Yeah, some of the areas that we were noted that needed maintenance, um, yeah, these are.
And they all line up with that green play recommendation, perfect. All right.
All right, the next one is at the airport, um, so this one, um.
That's the play equipment that Steve used.
That is.
We got that from, uh, over in Bar.
Oh, yeah, I recognize that.
Sorry.
Uh, so the image on the, on the left is our jet tank, um, so it's an above-ground tank, was built two thousand and twelve. Uh, that is owned by the city, uh, so we did b- build that, um, and we do collect a flowage fee to help pay that back. Um, the image on the right is our one hundred low lead tank, which is an in-ground tank, uh, and, um, it is privately owned, so it is owned by Wells Aircraft. Um, so what this project is to, is, um, to build an above-ground hundred low lead tank, uh, that the city would own. Um, and we continue to collect that, that flowage fee, um, to pay, to, to pay back the funding of this. Um, as of right now, we generate about eighty-five hundred dollars a year on the flowage fee. Um, so at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we're looking at about fifteen years to pay off. Um, to pay off the cost of that. The life expectancy of the system is, um, thirty-five plus years, um, so it's not something that, that would be, had to be replaced in ten or fifteen years. Uh, the other, there's a couple of things going on with this. Um, one is KDHG, KDHG, um, has asked Wells Aircraft numerous times to, to get rid of the in-ground tank. Um, the in-ground tanks are no longer acceptable, um, and so they're asking to abandon that tank. Um, but obviously if we abandon that tank, we still need to be able to offer low lead fuel, um, at the airport. Um, and, and the reason why this, why I would recommend and why, why Peter I'm sure would recommend that the city own this as opposed to being privately owned, um, is it's a, a key piece of infrastructure to the airport. I mean, it's something that it's expected that you can fuel your aircraft when you land. Um, and, and as long as we own that, that facility, we can always ensure that that's available. Um, if it's privately owned, we don't have that control, um, of, you could, will that service always be offered? Um, and again, we collect that flowage fee that, that pays it back over time, so.
But then we're responsible for the maintenance.
But then we're responsible for the, for the maintenance of the, um, I don't know what the maintenance on the jet fuel, um, bulk storage tank is. I'm sure Peter could, could address that and the maintenance of these above-ground tanks. Um, so, uh, the other thing that i- is worth noting, and Peter just reminded me, um, is these tanks, tanks generally take mu- nine months, um, once you order them to get on site. Um, so, you know, this is a system that was built in the seventies, the current in-ground tank. Um, every time we have an issue with it, we cross our fingers and hope that, that we can find parts. And a lot of times they're parts taken off other systems, used parts, um, a- and so something where, you know, catastrophic to happen today, you know, it could be nine months until, until we could get, um, fuel on the site. So luckily this, the low lead fuel system is working, uh, but this is something that could become an emergency relatively quickly if something, if something were to happen. Um, so this one is a new project on our five-year master plan. It was not in there last year. Um, this is something that Wells Aircraft, um, has been talking to Peter about for a while, so, um, and we, we felt it's important to, to get moving on this project.
Something I want to raise, and I, I doubt, I'm, I'm not even ex- exactly sure where, where I'm at in my thinking, and I, and I doubt that it'll be popular, but some, some thoughts I've had, John, as much to you. Kind of an ROI question regarding our, our airport in, in a, in a, in a big sense. Um, you know, I, I know that the, the anecdotal responses, uh, in, in terms of, of corporate customers, uh, uh, pleasure use, that kinda thing. But, but it, I, I'd be interested in, I'm, feasibility study comes to my mind, and we've talked feasibility study enough. I hate, I don't even like the idea of mentioning, but it just, I just wonder in terms of, of ongoing operating, uh, upgrades and upkeep and maintenance, uh, the, we're gonna be talking about the, um, the runway, and of course, we're looking at the, the tanks. And it's not to say they don't need to be done, but how much of a benefit, uh, what benefit is, is having the airport, uh, to our community? Um, there's an expense in, in, in terms of the, the, the infrastructure, um, uh, salaries, the, just what we do to, to operate and maintain an airport. Like I said, I, um, probably not popular, but it just sure has been something that, that comes to my mind, uh, al- almost every time that I think about the airport and look to, uh, current capital improvement, current requests and as, as well as going into the future.
Uh, so the last two or three years in the budget, we have, we have asked for a business plan, um, so feasibility study. Um, and, and that project just had been cut two or three years in a row. Um, and so Peter and I have kinda taken a little bit different approach to that. Uh, Peter's been working, um, with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, with planning, um, local engineer, I'm sure there's a few others, on, on really kinda developing a, a committee, there's not a formal committee at this point, um, but to kinda address some of those, those questions. Um, because you're right, we really do need to look at, look at the long-term use of the airport and, and how do we develop it? How do we promote it? What's the best use, um, of the airport? Um, and so since that business plan was continually cut, we decided that maybe we try to do it a little bit more organically. Um, now that committee has not, um, has not produced a lot of fruit at this point. Um, you know, it's still really early on in kinda the infancy of that, of that group, but that's something that, you know, we'd like to just continue to explore, um, i- is reaching a business plan or a feasibility study, um, since it has been cut out of the budget multiple times.
What was the expense associated with it, do you recall?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
That's a magic number, yeah.
Yeah, that's just kind of a given number.
That's like a standard.
Feasibility study, business plan, fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, and, and I don't, I don't almost hesitate, but I, may- maybe that was short-sightedness on our part the last year, the last several years or whatever, but I'd, I'd like to feel more confident, I guess, or, or that, that it's a, it's a solid investment for us to continue, um, investing in, rather than I, my, my, my personal sense is we're kinda flying by the, pun intended, I guess. Flying by the seat of our pants. So I leave that.
Obviously, they value the A business plan, they wouldn't include it the last three years. We, we might have, like I said, had it ever set on our part or whatever. I guess I might even suggest, is there one of these, uh, airport items that, uh, in lieu of, you could replace with the original request of the past three years or whatever?
Yeah, the only one would be, would, would be the, the next one, yeah.
Okay, okay, the next.
Yeah, I mean, I think this one's, this one's an important project, too.
Yeah, and, and you said it was, uh, a recommendation at this point, at what point does it become a mandate? Are we approaching that?
It will be.
Yeah.
I don't know, um, Don's the one who's getting those emails and, and communication with KDHG. I don't know if they've given him a hard, fast date or if they could in the future say bye, you know, January first of this date, it needs to be gone. So I don't know if that, if they've given him a hard, a hard date yet, so that, he's just indicated, no, that they haven't, but I, I, I'm assuming that is coming at some point.
Gotcha, okay, sense of urgency.
Well, Steve, I, I appreciate your, your comments, and I, I certainly would be one that would subscribe to, um, hopefully trying to get a, a business plan, uh, component uh, into the budget process, but, uh, I've watched and observed, uh, this airport for, and you've heard me talk about that before, for many, many, many years. And typically it's been a stepchild of the city of Hutchinson. Um, it's been kind of a hybrid out there with not much significant investments and thanked, thanks to the corporate world or the Dillons of the world, uh, sustained and maintained that airport for multiple years. And, um, to the credit of Peter Miller, um, first time I've seen in many, many, many years, a professional management level, uh, applied to that airport. And the work that he has done with his networking, with the FAA and leveraging millions and millions and millions of dollars to continue to upgrade our, our airport. I'm obviously an advocate of, uh, I mean, everything can change, but, uh, and I know we're not, we're certainly not at that point, but, uh, I think there are some opportunities, some commercial and industrial opportunities out at the airport. If we could finally get this business plan in place and, uh, to, to, to look at some opportunities of attracting businesses there on the airport, um, I'm all for, for those kinds of things, so, um, continued for another day of discussion, but, uh, um, I, I'm one that certainly supports the continuation of a solid first-class general aviation airport.
And I appreciate your, uh, length of, 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 of contact with that and interaction, uh, given, given your work in, with the chamber and, and, and the impact there. I don't have that other than as a citizen, reading, reading the newspaper and that kinda thing, so I appreciate that. And I, I will add, uh, again, from a, from Peter being the only person I've had any contact with, it's certainly not been negative at all, it's been positive. I, I don't have the comparison level, but it, I'm certainly, uh, likewise impressed, Peter, with what, with what you've done. But I, and I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, if a business plan includes a feasibility elements, uh, I, I'd really like to see that. And I'd really like to see either your trading off or our funding it, uh, so that we can, uh, quit treating it like a stepchild. Or there's always the reverse, give it up and, and, and move on. But, uh, but, but have a, a basis to do so, not just that we feel it's good, people talk about it being good, that kinda thing, that we can support it, uh, and that, that there's a reasonably achievable plan to get from here to wherever, wherever we wanna go.
I think it's difficult for the average citizen to recognize the value or non-value of the airport. And it's a challenge for Peter with limited resources to really communicate that to people. So I would certainly be in favor as well of a, of a business plan, so we can better communicate the possibility, yeah.
See, it just had to be our idea.
Lesson one.
You know?
That's so arrogant of us. Apologies for the last three years.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so this is the restroom remod- remodel for the terminal building, um, so the project we asked for last year as well. Um, you really just needs a facelift, it's, you know, old tile, uh, fixtures are old, Formica countertops. Uh, the image on the left is an interesting image, um, that's actually taken from the main corridor as you walk in.
Yep.
Um, so there is actually a urinal, uh, right behind this screen right here, so I know we talked about that last year.
Yeah.
Um, so somebody walks in and hits that ADA.
I remember having that thought when I was at the airport and in the restroom, not too long ago, that's right.
So, I mean, you know, it, it doesn't just serve just the terminal, it truly serves the restaurant, which serves seventy thousand people annually. So it's, it's a heavily used, used facility that really, it's just time to, to clean it up and, and update it. You know, there's a stark difference between the look of this and, and the rest of the building, so.
Going back about a minute and a half, though, you'd be willing to trade that out for a business plan?
To me, the business plan is, is that important, yeah. I mean, we've been living with this for a while, um, you know, could we come in and, and do a, a better partition, maybe to at least eliminate the one privacy issue and get us by a few more years? Absolutely. Um, it doesn't address, you know, the faucets and the sinks.
Right.
The commodes and those sorts of things, but, um, but i- if, if that's on the table, yeah, I'd be, I'd be willing to, uh, uh, to push this one back and, um, and really explore the business plan.
Well, one would expect that this would be included in the business plan, too, so we wouldn't be the rodent of ship. We'd, we'd have a plan of when we're gonna.
Yeah, they're gonna tell us to maintain our existing facilities.
Sure, 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 yeah. Very good.
Uh, the final project for the airport, um, so seal coat, um, it'd be seal coat and restriping of runway one three, three one. Um, so it's an FAA-funded project, project, so the eighty-five thousand is our share, which is just ten percent of, of the project, so. Uh, this is actually one of our newer runways, um, it's just time to, uh, ti- time to do a little bit of maintenance on it, so.
Yeah, ten years.
Cross runway.
That is, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Ten years ago, so, yeah.
You said it's temper, the, the eighty-five thousand represents ten percent?
Ten percent, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Could, could we have some comments from you or Peter in regards to the lightning strikes?
Absolutely. Peter's now a lightning expert.
And damage done or?
Kind of what kinda karma you're dealing with, but.
Yeah, well.
You spend ten years out there and you bring in seventeen or eighteen million dollars, and all anybody remembers you for is a couple lightning strikes that I have really nothing, uh, nothing to do with. So, um, yeah, May seventh, we had a lightning strike, one of the storms rolled through and it, uh, it hit the main apron right outside of the, the restaurant. Um, I, we caught it. Um, I, we caught it on one of our video cameras and so I uploaded it to our YouTube page and, and, uh, it actually went viral, um, pretty, pretty good. It was actually picked up by NBC National and ABC Media Companies and it, uh, got a lot of play, um, actually. It was kind of, kind of neat to see that. And, uh, so we got some price quotes to get that fixed and then low and behold, about two weeks later, we had another one about a hundred feet northwest of that same hit. And so now everybody's kind of, uh, well, that's kind of weird that they're, that they're hitting that close, you know, to each other there. Um, same amount of damage on each one and it, it should be repaired probably by the end of next week.
Okay.
Um, we did catch the second one, uh, uh, second one on camera as well. Uh, last week I was approached by, there's a, there's a national company called Vasilia that does, uh, lightning strike detection for the entire North America. And, uh, they were excited because we actually had two specific spots where we could say the lightning hit right here. So they wanted to compare those locations with what it is their sensors, uh, said. So we took some GPS coordinates and I emailed it to them. And, uh, they came back and sent me a whole bunch of information about the type of lightning strike that it was and whether it was a positive charge or a negative charge or a triple feedback loop. Um, we also, they told me the average amperage of what each one of those lightning strikes, what's those bolts, uh, bolt hit at. Um, so anyway, I learned quite a bit about, about lightning strikes, but, um.
Damage-wise though, it, it's not impaired the operation?
No, no, it, no, not really. We've got it barricaded off. Um, it basically just blew the top two inches of asphalt off the, uh, off the apron there. And it was, it didn't damage the concrete or any of the base underneath, so it's just a, just an asphalt patch job.
Okay, so small on that region?
Yep, so I, we can, we can handle that.
We can handle that, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Interesting.
We're getting close, I promise.
Let's talk golf.
Uh, let's talk golf course. Um, parking lot, uh, chip, um, chip seal and restripe project. Um, again, this parking lot has, as, as far as Matt Miller, um, can remember, has never had any sort of surface treatment. Um, so this should just be a, a chip seal, um, and then restripe. Um, the parking lot's kind of an awkward parking lot anyway because of the way it's laid out. Um, so then with, with the lines are, are getting more and more difficult to see, it really makes, makes this a hard parking lot to navigate. Um, and you can see just the amount of cracking, uh, that we have that we've, that we've sealed, um, over the years. But really it's time to do just kind of a, a surface treatment on this parking lot.
Justin, does any of the recent rain damage change any of these requests for the golf course? I mean, we may have to repair entire holes.
It could. We, we just don't know the, the extent of the damage and then we also don't know about reimbursement for those, so.
And probably won't for quite some time in terms of reimbursement.
As far as reimbursement.
If it comes at all.
Yeah, I mean, we, we'll know sooner, um, you know, if the water will go down, we'll know relatively quick how much turf's actually died.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we can come up with an, with an estimate. If we were to resaw it, all of that, what does that look like? But at this point, we don't.
Yeah, no.
We don't know.
Would your, uh, uh, would you be relining or re, re, reconfiguring the parking lot?
Um, I don't think we'd necessarily reconfigure it. Uh, I mean, it works. Um, it, it's just when you can't see the lines and if one person parks off just a little bit, it, it gets a little, um, a little goofy because of the way it's, it's angled, so, I mean, and we do need that much parking, especially for some of our big events. You know, we'll overflow across the street to the zoo. Um, so it is crammed in there pretty tight, but, um, uh, but we do really need this much parking, so. Uh, the next project is also just a maintenance project at the golf course. Um, this would be to re-ruff all of our, um, all of our shingled roofs, um, at the, at the golf course, primarily the, uh, main shop as well as the cart shed. So this is an image of the, of the cart shed. Uh, we've got multiple leaks in all of our buildings. Um, the reason this one's a concern is one is we have our cart fleet in there as well as privately owned, um, uh, carts uh, in these facilities that are now leaking pretty heavily. Um, so there, it's really just time to, time to re, re-ruff everything, so. Uh, so golf course master plan renovations. Um, I just want to step back just, um, uh, for a minute about what we've done in, in the past. Um, last several years, we've done one phase every other year, which has typically been two holes. Um, so in, in fifteen, we did two holes, um, seventeen, we did two holes. We were originally planning to do and we funded two holes through twenty nineteen. However, um, Matt's done a great job with the budget out there and realized that i- if we can fund half of the next phase, that we can actually do two phases in one, um, so do four holes, um, at really seventy-five percent of what we had been budgeting in the past. Um, if that all kind of makes sense. Um, so pushing back, so not doing a project in nineteen, uh, pushing us back to twenty, um, and doing two full phases or four, four complete holes in twenty. So that does save us about two hundred thousand dollars over what we had projected, um, if we were to continue with the two holes every other year, uh, process. The other thing this does, um, is it completes the front line, um, and it really gets us to a, a really nice place that we can kind of revisit, you know, how much are we going to continue to fund the, the upgrades, um, at, at the golf course, so. A little bit of detail on what this phase would include, uh, would be new tees on hole five. Um, on hole six, uh, which is the, the par three with the pond, uh, would be new tees, um, as well as a pond. Um, would the architects recommending that pond become kind of a native bunker? Um, it's really only a pond when we have this kind of rain. Normally it's a swamp, it smells. Um, it, it's groundwater connected, so we can't really fill it. Uh, we, we don't have a way to fill it for one thing. Um, we've looked at lining it, um, and creating a nice water feature, um, but the price just gets really expensive to do that. So the architect is just saying, we fill it back in, um, with native sand that we have on site from when we dug it. We leave it down three or four feet, um, and we have it kind of as a, as a rough, natural-looking bunker. Um, and then these, this type of rain events would actually fill it because it's, would still be groundwater. So it could be part of the year could actually be a pond. When that water table goes down, instead of having this nasty smelling swamp, we'll have a sand bunker there, so. Um, hole seven then, um, would get new tees. Uh, hole eight, which is the really short par three, uh, would get new tees and a new green. Um, this is one of our, our problem greens. It's one of our smallest greens, um, um, on the course and it's really, really needs, um, complete, um, renovation. Would also be irrigation for all, uh, all four holes. Which is really the, the driving force behind all this renovation is the irrigation upgrades. Irrigation system we have now is going on thirty years old. It's cast iron main pipes. Um, this goes to a plastic, modern, um, very dialed-in, controllable system, so.
Justin, talk to me a little bit about the budget. I'm a little confused. So this two hundred and thirteen, does that include what we originally budgeted for twenty nineteen?
No, that, that's, okay, so in our original plan, we were going to do holes, um, five and six in nineteen.
Okay.
Okay, um, and, and, and then we would budget half the phase in twenty and half the phase in twenty-one to do holes seven and eight. And then we'd complete that work in twenty-one. So we, we divide the funding out, um, so there's funding every year, but we only do a project every other year.
Yeah.
Um, so what this is doing is compressing that schedule, so we get four holes in basically three years worth of funding. Uh, so we, we've compressed, or, yeah, it'd be three years worth of funding. And each year we've been, we've been funding in the range of two hundred to two twenty.
So would this complete the master plan?
This would not complete the master plan.
Justin, I like everything you're talking about, but the one thing I haven't heard that I was hoping to hear, and you've heard me talk about this before, is the condition of the fairways itself and making the transition to, um, these four holes and other holes in terms of from the Bermuda to the Zoysia. It's been a great improvement on the holes we've done thus far, other than, I think there's, there, there'd been some issues with, uh, number three and number four in terms of the problem with the, the Zoysia. Uh, because we had a terrible influx of, of weeds this past year and it didn't come in. But clearly tell us what the plans are for the transition to the Zoysia, if, if that's in the plan.
Yeah, that's something we, we're evaluating. That's something I have pressed Matt and pressed the architect on, um, is to going to a full conversion. We are not done with the design of these, of these four, so this is all just conceptual at this point on what things could look like. So that, that is a priority for us. Um, I, I can't sit here and tell you that, that yes, all four of these will be converted. Um, but that is something we will press the, the architect on. If that is a top priority, we, we will make that happen if that's what we, what we really want to do. But at this point, we're just not far enough along with the design and with the cost estimating to, to know if we, if we convert.
This a, a long time, but, uh, if, if I were to suggest where the priorities ought to be, it needs to be in the fairways and perhaps not necessarily the replacement of the greens. Um, um, I think those greens are playable, but those fairways are just absolutely in, we've had a tough spring. Um, and it's the biggest complaint that I think throughout the region that people talk about Kerry Park. Uh, we do not have a very good reputation right now as, as a golf course. And, um, it's not just myself, but, uh, many, many others. And, uh, the greatest improvement has been to one, nine, and eighteen in terms of that conversion. And I'm just hoping that we can finish what we, uh, hope to as far as the, the fairways itself.
Well, how many of those fairways are currently underwater?
Well, let's see, there's, um, there's, on the front side, there's five is underwater, seven is underwater. And in the back, fifteen and sixteen are underwater.
Okay.
Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are underwater.
Okay, so part of your issue may be resolved once we figure out how much died. Because then you're going to have to come back and replant anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're going to replant with hopefully the different crops.
But the pushback on, on the transition, uh, I just continually hear pushback on that and, uh, you know what, what my feelings are.
Yeah, we've made, and we've made that clear, clear to the architect as well. Um, like I said, we are just.
Is it the architect's call or how much input do we have?
Well, we can tell him. I mean, if, if, if the direction is we convert all four to Zoysia, we tell him that and then he knows the budget and then.
Yeah.
And then that does affect what we have left to do green, green replacements and tees and those sorts of things, so.
Yeah, we've had conversations about just what you're saying is moving away from new greens, new this, new that, and getting the fairways in shape. Um, water system's critical.
Water system's critical.
And then, you know, move on from there because, you know, these four that are underwater, um, they'll, they'll never be the same. I mean, I.
No, uh, they couldn't be, yeah.
And if we've got to rebuild them all, we're not going to plant Bermuda.
Let's not put Bermuda back, my goodness gracious.
I think you've, I, I think you've made that very clear.
Yeah.
And they've struggled, you're right. Those green, I mean, those fairways have struggled, um, so.
Okay. Justin, I'd like to follow up on Jade's question. So this year has two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that we have or will be bonding, um, for golf course, uh, master plan. And you're proposing two hundred and thirteen for next year. How are we saving almost two hundred thousand dollars?
Because we're getting four holes. So the original plan was in twenty nineteen, just to do holes five and six.
Right.
And then we'd fund holes seven and eight. Um, so we'd fund the two hundred and thirteen and, and twenty and then follow up with another two hundred and thirteen and twenty-one and then construct those two holes in twenty-one. We have saved enough money through, um, doing some work in-house, um, and through some design changes that we're comfortable that we can, we can pull off doing all four holes.
Oh, so you, so you're saying you will not need the additional two hundred and thirteen in twenty-one?
To, to complete.
That's the two hundred thousand.
That's a, that's a two hundred dollars difference, a two hundred thousand dollars difference over the next three.
So thi- this would have been, um, or, or originally this two hundred and thirteen you're asking for, for twenty would have been one-half of what you would add to twenty-one to, to do the seven and eight.
Complete hole seven and eight, correct.
And you're saying now you can do it for the two thirteen you've got? Okay. And you can do Zoysia?
I was gonna say you could have before the, before the flood.
Converting to Zoysia will change some, some of the things that I've, I've talked about.
Okay.
But if long-term, it's better maintenance, then it's probably the best way to go anyway.
Yep.
Okay. It's subtle, but there was a difference between last year's request for the clubhouse seal and line, um, parking lot and this year's thirty thousand to forty thousand?
Uh, last year we tried to take advantage, um, we did a chip seal in Kerry Park. Um, so we had the contractor right there on site, literally right next door. Um, and so that's how we came up with those, those dollars. And now we, we talked to engineering and, and looked at the, that cost again. Now the contractors have to bring the, the equipment here. So, I mean, we did ask for this, uh, for that project. Um, it was one of the last-minute cuts.
So if we'd listened to you, could have saved ten thousand dollars, is that what you're saying?
I didn't say it.
Message received.
Leverage volume. We'll remember that.
All right, so that's, that's all the projects. I do have my reserves, but if we want to move on and we can come, come back to reserves.
I think due to time, let's, let's try to get through that first gray area, um, and then if there's some random questions, we can go from there. You'll, you'll have to look. So did, uh, the fire chief quit on us?
I could see him, he's taking a, a call.
He took a call.
His timing.
Ah, he left at the wrong time. Lo- lo- not only he lost his place, he's out of line and gone. Finish up with Public Works Center real quick and then.
Uh, he is actually walking.
I think he's walking back in, yeah. Sorry, chief, we moved on.
Chief, we skipped.
You chose the wrong time to step out. I think that happened to you last year or something along that line.
I think it did. Let's see here.
We like picking on you.
I did, um, talking about the reimbursement, um, I, I knew, I do know like with a golf course and stuff like that, um, if it's not insured and it's public land, you're, might be eligible like for seventy-five, eighty percent reimbursement on that type. But if you're insured, uh, then there's, there's not nothing that you're going to get. And Reno County was declared a disaster and so everything is open for reimbursement right now.
Are we?
Including Hutch.
Are we insured?
We, we don't have flood insurance there.
No, we don't have flood insurance, okay. Oh, that's right, the golf course, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, I just have three quick things here and, uh, so hopefully we'll get right through this here. Uh, we have three items for the twenty twenty CIP, uh, station repairs. Um, we've got a cost share project, logistical building that was been in there for a few years already that we talked extensively last year with HCC and our conceptual drawings for Fire Station One. Take a look at the first one here, logistical building, uh, the training center here. Uh, this is sort of what the building looks like. If you're familiar with our training grounds out there, there's not one shade tree, there's nothing out there. Um, a big part of this whole thing is, uh, this building would provide shade for firefighters. Our firefighters, I don't, if you're aware of, with becoming an ISO one city, every single firefighter has to have twenty hours of training per month. And so we're out at the training grounds a lot and, and all summer long, it's, uh, gets very hot out there. This would be, uh, a classroom area outside with shade protection. Right adjacent to it here, that first door that you see on this building is what we call a dirty classroom. Um, right now, one of the biggest things, uh, since I, I've come to Hutch here, is, uh, we did some internal studies on the cancer initiatives. And one of the big thing here is that, um, seventy percent of our retirees have died of cancer. As far as we can go back within our, our, with Hutch firefighters. Um, the average firefighter lives ten to fifteen years, um, dies sooner than the average person in the population because of the risks that we do day in and day out. And so when I came to Hutch here two years ago, as you've seen, like when we purchased the extractors here for the stations, everything that we do revolves around changing the culture in our organization with the cancer initiatives. Uh, any building you walk into, the first thing you're going to see on the outside is no PPE allowed inside the buildings. And PPE is personal protective equipment. So when a firefighter goes on a car fire this morning, um, they get all sooty, dirty and stuff like that. That gear goes right into the extractor, it doesn't come into the building, it stays out in the apparatus bay. Uh, before it was allowed to come into, like my office is out at Fourth Street. People would, uh, come in, their gear would be off-gassing, that's how we're getting cancer. There's twenty-two kinds of cancer that we're more prone to than the average public. And so this would be a dirty classroom. They come right from the burned building, they could go in, they could talk about their tactics and stuff like that along with a college and stuff like that, what we call, like I said, a dirty classroom. That stuff stays out there and does not come into what we call our clean areas in our stations or at the training center. Then the other part of the building is just for our, uh, tractors and, uh, maintenance stuff that we have right now, which is actually stored in cargo containers. And one of the big thing with the change in weathers, everything rusts out due to moisture and stuff in these cargo containers. So having a, a, uh, one building out there, like I said, it's been on a, a. So having a, a, uh, one building out there, like I said, it's been on a, a block here for a few years. And with a joint venture with HCC, it's just a perfect marriage uh, between the two agencies working together for the common of a lot of people here. So uh, everybody will take advantage of it, it'll be a great building and it'll definitely uh, help us out in the long run as we pro- uh, progress here.
The eighty-two, how does that represent our share percentage wise with their share?
What we're gonna do here, we're gonna pay for the uh, putting up the building on the outside. They're gonna take care of all the infrastructure on the inside. So electrical, lighting, plumbing, um, walls, um, chairs, classroom stuff that needs to be set up. Uh, that's how we split it out, so.
So what's the total cost of the building then?
Uh, we'll probably have a little bit more into it, with the eighty-two with the outside. I would imagine they'll have about fifty thousand into the inside of the building, so.
Last year your request was for seventy thousand, or seventy-four.
Yeah, due to metal, steel prices going up is really the difference here.
But that was last year's pole shed cross share, this the same, same thing, right?
Same thing, yes, correct. Yeah, steel prices.
Building design layout is?
Every, that's actually the same print as we had two years, three years ago.
Okay.
That picture there. Alright. Next one here is uh, typically every single year without, besides last year and the year before, we bumped it down to forty-five thousand last, this year I have fifteen thousand dollars to maintain seven buildings. And you can only do that for so long, uh, without getting yourself really behind the eight ball. And so this seventy-five thousand dollars, it takes a look at all our facilities, even though we have some of the newest, a couple of new stations here, um, there's always issues that arise here. And I put on the list here, uh, chunk of this money goes to concrete repairs. We have a lot of concrete on the aprons and stuff like that, that's broken, busted up. Um, we have some HVAC systems that are over twenty years old. Renting cameras to the outside parking lots for security purposes at our stations. Uh, we've had some vandalism and stuff like that in the past. Uh, there's an irrigation repair that needs to take place and then general repairs of uh, of our seven facilities that we have. And so this is typically just a standing item that we have in here again, but uh.
It's out of reserves though, right? Is this being requested out of reserves?
Says general fund.
It's not a reserve transfer. It's not general fund.
Yeah, it's new money, just when we say reserves, it's like seventy-five, so it can be on different projects. It's not project one specific, so.
Correct, yes.
Seventy-five thousand dollars here is a general fund hit, if you will.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not, it's not sitting, sitting over here now. It would go into that.
It would, it would come out of general fund to, to provide the funding to do the variety of things that you've talked about.
And then hopefully over time, there's some built up that we've probably spent most of those, I'm sure, over the years, so.
So this includes maintenance on um, the station we're using for storage now as well, right? I mean, long-term, that's not our plan to keep.
Right over here Avenue B, correct. We still maintain the heat and electric, but that's a separate item than this. But we haven't, we haven't hot suck uh, any money into that building at all um, since we left the, the building here a year and a half ago.
What's the, to, tell me how bad it would be not to fund all or part of that seventy-five that you're requesting?
Again, we've, uh, this year we're down to fifteen thousand dollars. It's just like, if you think of your home, I have seven buildings to maintain. Uh, we can postpone it, like this year I have fifteen thousand dollars worth of repairs on seven buildings. Um, I, I cannot do that, it's gonna take a hit. And so um, it's sort of like, um, when they, when you call plumber, you call, um, we need the electrician, we need everything else at eighty to a hundred dollars an hour, um, and stuff like that. So on weekends, nights and stuff, that all adds up real fast in the big picture of things. And so, yeah, we can defer maintenance, which we've been doing the last two years. We went from fifteen, the year before we were at forty-five and, and prior to that was been seventy-five originally.
So why, what caused it to go down? I mean, I know that was us, but there were other things that went up.
Priority last year was to get us into New World. And New World was a game changer. If you remember that conversation, we gave up pretty much everything in our budget to get New World, to bring us up to the modern world for, uh, with dispatch, with our reporting system. Everything we do in our organization is data-driven now. And to get to the point where I can give you facts and figures exactly on every possible thing, um, we didn't have a system in place that could do that with our old uh, firehouse reporting and with the uh, not having computers in the rigs, um, and all the things that New World brings to the table. We were fifteen years behind at times in that area. So was that important last year for making that decision and fighting for it to get us New World and giving up all these other things to defer it um, for a little bit here, so. Um, but again, if you think of it as your home, um, you can only defer maintenance so long. And that's your decision on what, you know, how we do these things.
Well, this is such a modest number, seventy-five thousand dollars for uh, annual maintenance of an operation the size of our fire department.
A little over ten thousand dollars a building a year.
Uh, can't you incorporate this in some way into your, into your uh, operating budget? That you don't have to come here yearly for a seventy-five thousand dollar request, that you build that into your operating budget?
I can definitely do that.
Rather than this modest seventy-five thousand dollar request that.
I'd love to do that.
To me, that ought to be in the operating budget.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it fits in with the other projects at all.
I'm amazed, I mean, you got a multi-million dollar operation and so essential, uh, first-class fire department and you're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars? It doesn't, it doesn't fit in my mind.
I appreciate that comment.
And why we do the reserve fund is because we move it over to a reserve fund and, you know, chief, he's good, but he, he's not gonna spend exactly seventy-five thousand dollars. Maybe there's a year we spend sixty and so that ten carries over to the next year. If it's just a line item in the general fund, it's just, you know, you, you spend it or you don't spend it and uh, so. But you know, you go back last year and you guys know the budget discussions we had. We went through every one of these reserves and cut them in at least half, if not a third, to get to where we needed to get. And so that's, that's how it happened last year, the year before that, it was thirty-five, it was basically half of it. Um, so uh, um, but you know, whether it's in the operating fund or this fund, it's still net.
It's still money.
So I understand it's still money, but.
Yeah, and, and we can do that. I, I mean, ideally I like the reserve fund because then, then it can, if, if it's funded fully, then it, it moves over and we may not spend it all, um, so.
So if it's in the general, it's kind of a use it or lose it.
Correct.
For the most part, I mean, ultimately.
So there's more of an incentive to use it instead of being super mindful of. I, I can respect that too.
Yeah, so I mean, so either way, it's still, you know, the same money, but the idea for the departments is that, you know, some years they're not spending it all, that it stays there and um, so they're trying to anticipate things and we may not have to do any, you know, HVAC work, but so.
Well, right, and there's seven facilities, but of course they're in various ages, states, you know, the two newest probably have very minimal uh, stuff like that, but then the elder statesmen probably, uh, there's a, there's a curve and as we get further in the curve, the precipitous drop gets steeper and steeper.
Correct.
So identifying those that need it most.
Okay.
So that's kind of the um, philosophy on a lot of these reserves. So when you have the public works building.
Right.
Reserve and would it, would it be fair to put them all in the general and what would that look like?
Put, put them where?
I mean, if, if we did it with one department.
Just do them all, yeah. There's a line on them.
The wastewater treatment facility project reserve, um, you know, the public works facility reserve.
Well, some of those monies come out of the uh, water and sewer funds and those kind of things.
Yeah.
But it generally stands out a little bit here, otherwise it's, you know, it, it would be in contractual services. And, and so when you look at contractual service, you say, why? Why is that so big? Uh, well, it's, it's a lot of these unanticipated expenses that we don't have and, and, you know, so it's gonna show up there and we put in detail there, it's for building maintenance, what have you, you know. And in this case, it, it does provide a little flexibility for department directors to spend it as it's needed and not on a specific project, so. But at the end of the day, it's, it's a general fund expense, it's not gonna reduce it one way or the other, so. But you're right Jade, if we did one, we'd probably just move them all over there and basically get rid of, you know, that whole gray, that whole gray section at the bottom.
At the bottom, yeah.
Please, chief.
Alright, and the last one here is uh, it's something that a lot of you were on the council. I went back, uh, I had Linda pull the minutes here, I want to take a look for myself, but in Jan- or July seventh of two thousand and fifteen, um, that's when uh, the minutes, uh, the discussion was on the three stations. And in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, Station One was supposed to start construction. And obviously we're not to that point yet here and so uh, we want to make sure we had it in the right place. When I got to town here, that was one of the hot topics right away, was what was gonna happen here. Station One is the one at Twentieth and Main and that was the last of the three phases of construction here. So um, proposal would be twenty twenty-one to get conceptual drawings here this year for the, we've been working with the state fair board extensively on it. Uh, we got a couple of different options to look at, we want to keep it there, it's actually one of our busiest stations. Um, one of the things with the fair board has told me that um, if they do get a hotel up that way, um, we may move it up two blocks to Twenty-third and Main, uh, by skates up at that corner. Um, or leave it right where it is right now and we take a little bit more land behind the station off of Twentieth Avenue. And so um, but they're totally on board, uh, they love it, that's one of our, like I said, our busiest stations. Um, the station was built in the sixties, it's uh, one of the stations that I have. I have two female firefighters, there's no female shower, restroom, bathroom, general public bathroom there. There's nothing at that station, it's that far out of times. And so either way, we gotta, we gotta get up to speed with uh, some of the needs that we have here. We have a lot, a lot of public events there. Uh, being on the stair fairgrounds, it's one of our busiest tour stations where people constantly come into the station and there's no restroom, um, for them, it's just little things like that. Uh, we have luminaries with Santa Claus in December that we host there. Um, same type of thing, we have four hundred, five hundred people there, but uh, there's no restrooms. And uh, trucks just barely fit in the doors of the station when they pull in and out. And so we moved the battalion chief up there from uh, the old station here, he's housed up at that station now. And so um, as, as we go forward here, uh, we're taking a look at all the different things here. And one of the things I told you, I'm, I'm very data-driven as a, I just came from a conference here in Kansas City on fire station design. Our, our stations and one of the things, I'm sure your question is, well, why don't we use the same design we had for the last two? And so one of the things I want to tell you right up front here is um, from the general's perspective, general public's perspective, our stations that we just recently built from the outside, they look beautiful. They look absolutely beautiful. Functionality of them, um, they don't function for a full-time fire department and I'll tell you a couple of things. Will they work? Yes, they work. But one of the key things is when you design fire stations, um, we didn't build what I talked about, anything that deals with cancer initiatives. Um, we didn't have the primal vent exhaust systems in the stations. We didn't have, we didn't have like laundry rooms that are away from the uh, where the personnel are housed, the kitchen areas of bunk rooms. They always designed the bunk room in a far back corner of the stations. And so at night, what I call our turnout times, turnout time is when we get the alarm and by the time that we, dispatch dispatches us and the time we turn a wheel out the door. And on an EMS call, first responder call, I want my people out, the national standard is one minute. In one minute and twenty seconds for a, on a structured fire where they gotta get all their gear on and stuff like that. Um, when their house way in the back, it adds another twenty, thirty seconds to the runs. And when you add up the dispatch time, the turnout time and response time, I want every one of my engine companies or truck companies being on scene within five minutes and twenty-five seconds. That's the standard for a class one city. And so when you design stations, you want the bunk rooms and stuff right up front by the apparatus doors. You want the kitchens in the far back when people are up dressed all day long. And it just, the design focus of the stations, um, it needs to be redesigned and, and done right. Another thing too, that uh, was brought to our attention here and it's, it's a tou- touchy subject out there, but when we start thinking twenty years down the road, forty years and even right now, is uh, in the fire stations, a lot of times they're putting what they're doing now right now is jack and jill bathrooms and showers in the stations um, because of uh, gender neutral issues and uh, in your workforce. And so them are things that we don't think about that we have to address in our design of buildings uh, as we go forward. So, but uh, the state fair board, I can tell you and the director are totally on board with keeping us up there. They love to have us there on the fairgrounds. Um, there's, like I said, you guys know about it, there's events going on every single weekend up there. And uh, we run a lot of calls uh, just on the fairgrounds in general. And so between that station and Station Three, uh, they're really close back and forth, are two busiest stations.
What is our uh, what is our lease agreement with the state uh, that allows us to be on that property? I, I, there was, was there some hundred-year magic number or something like that or?
One of those and if we ever left the building, it reverts to the state.
Okay, but, but we're not under constraints to, to leave at any time, there's no deadline per se?
I can't remember.
I can't remember either.
We touched that too, I think it was a dollar agreement at one time or something like that for a hundred years and um, they would renew up that with a new place and.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so there is, there is some hundred-year number, I had that in my mind, I can remember.
Yeah.
Where you gotten that from, okay.
And they're willing, like I said, to give us more land to the east of our existing station that's up there actually. So they just want us up there is the big thing.
Yeah, when during the fair, that, that's, that's prime real estate land that you're talking about, going, going east of the current station, so.
And that's it, that's all I have.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Uh, getting towards the bottom here, public works.
Making a long morning of this.
Alright, alright.
That's okay.
The next portions of this are, come from the study we did and had the study session, what, two or three months ago on the wastewater plan.
Yeah.
Um, so the first one would be uh, intermediate pump station for next year. It's actually already in process, the first phase of that, actually you'll get a recommendation for in a couple of weeks for the initial pipeline for the, for that. So we're installing a pipeline from our primary clarifiers to our secondary clarifiers, uh, not clarifiers, to the aeration basins. And then uh, the second phase is going to be uh, replacing the screw pumps out there that are uh.
Antiquated.
Antiquated, they're, I mean, they're, they've worked very well, but uh, parts are very expensive and, and replacing those are about a quarter million dollars apiece. So the first phase is going to be about a quarter million dollars for this pipeline, which will take off the need for approximately three of the screw pumps that we currently have right now. We can actually operate with one. Uh, we've really seen this uh, during the last uh, month. Our flow out there is, average flow for typical years, about five million gallons a day. Uh, for the last two weeks, we've been about fifteen plus.
Oh, sure.
So uh.
A little bit of an increase, huh?
We've had a little bit of increase and we've actually had to rent pumps again out there uh, to handle additional water to, because of the two screw pumps that currently are operating. Uh, so this uh, will replace the screw pumps with uh, what we call submersible pumps, basically big sump pumps. Um, and that, those will handle about ten million gallons a day. The pipeline itself will handle eighteen million gallons a day. So that, that's the uh, million dollars for that. Like I say, you're gonna be, it's gonna be about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that you're gonna see next, in a couple of weeks for the proposal for phase one.
So do we, do we have, we have money in this year's budget?
Yes.
To begin the phase that you're talking about?
I don't know if it, was it in this year, John, I can't remember. Uh, cause the study was just completed at the end of the year last year. Uh, you know, we were moving some of the reserves up, I believe is what Brian was.
Okay.
The, the end of that, I can't remember, so. Uh, but anyway.
Cause the request is for one point one.
Right, that's the total project.
In the twenty budget, but we're gonna start on it.
Start on it this year.
This year? So the, the two hundred and fifty that you, you've referenced would be part of this one point one?
Right, correct.
That's a, that's a, it's a combination of a bonded and reserves project, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess, John, what, where are we coming up with a, with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that?
We didn't have any budget in nineteen for this project.
I was looking, I didn't see anything.
But I think the anticipation was it's added is, is.
Probably gonna do reserves for that first part until we can get the bonding rolling and that kind of stuff, okay. Right.
Also because of the issues we have with uh, where we are right now.
Yeah.
Uh, we're spending a lot of money on, on pump rental right now.
Pump rental, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's about fifteen thousand dollars a month. In the end, what it was last year, so we haven't been built for this one yet. Uh, secondary treatment. Secondary treatment, we'll budget it for next year, and UV, I'm gonna combine those two together. All these are, the secondary treatment is specific to our MPDS permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which we just received in January 1. And as per that permit, our ammonia requirements for discharge limits are basically cut in 60%. And when we did the study, we were basically on the line, actually a little bit high. We would have had several exceedances in that permit, in the prior permit cycle, which is five years. So we negotiated with the state to provide about a four-year implementation period to improve the ammonia removal, which occurs in the secondary basins. And so that's going to involve changing one and two basins to, from a, what's called a jet tech-type system to a diffusion-based system, improvement on blowers, and also on instrumentation to allow us to operate those at the prime operating point. Because right now, it's all manual, and we're doing most of our analysis by, by hand. So we don't know day-to-day, you know, where, where actually we are on, on our ammonia removal. And that's all what's called nutrient removal for the river system, which actually ends up out into the, in the Gulf of Mexico eventually and preventing algae issues out there. So that's what's the driving force behind all of that. And also for lack, or keeping growth down in the river and what have you. So.
And this will all be bonded and paid for through the sewer funds to pay the bonds?
And these are all projects, Joe, remind me, when we came, Brian and you, that study session, we looked at the feasibility or the master plan for improvements in wastewater. All these are part of that study.
And part of it's also with the, the rate structure, and, and Brian is working on a, with the Burns and McDonald's on the financial side of that, of actually reviewing the sewer rates after the current rate study, or rates are implemented in five years of what it's going to take to fund the bond from there forward. So UV building is the one that we talked about at that time, where our UV system was put in in the early 90s, and parts aren't available anymore. And so it basically just replace what's there. But the UV system disinfects our water going out, so you don't have the nasty bugs potentially going out to the river.
Do we still have a small stockpile of the bulbs?
We still have, well, the bulbs are okay. It's the ballast.
Ballast, it was ballast.
That, and we still do. We, we have enough for a couple of years. Should. Of course, a, a good lightning strike, Peter was talking about.
Take that out. Assuming we go forward and, and of course do the bonding, do we, do we have some, some sewer reserve fund, funded bonds that will be dropping off? Where, where do we stand there? Do you know?
I'm not sure on sewer specific.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have some bonds pay off every year.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't know the number, but they're coming off every year and.
I guess when, when.
Well, the bio building.
When Brian's got that all worked out, I'd be interested in hearing about the, the, kind of the interplay and the combination between bonds that may be coming up to being paid off, and we just be then substituting, but bringing in some new as well as what impact it may have in terms of sewer rates.
So the last major project out there was in 2009, 2008 and nine, which was about Biosol's building. I don't know when that actually comes off. You know, Brian let me know about this, you know, last Thursday, so.
He had plenty of time to prepare.
And have, have a huge amount of time to, to answer some of those questions.
Appreciate it. You've done well.
But did, but, but we did talk when we met last week that the rate study mentioned that, you know, even though we did the previous rate study, looking at where we're at today, as we implement new projects, we're gonna have to reevaluate that as well. And would probably require some increases in sewer rates to, to retire these bonds, so.
And we deviated from the recommendations they usually offered up.
Right, we didn't go as high.
Front-end cash load and, and we didn't accept that.
All right.
There is a sewer bond that pays off in 2021 that we're making about $130,000 payments for a year.
Okay, so what, what was that? What was the initial value of that bond?
I'm not, I'm not sure, because it was refund, or refinanced at one point.
Okay. Again, just, I'd be interested though, in terms of just looking at that balance and, and being tuned into it in terms of as we consider sewer rates, probably here in the not-too-distant future.
Well, I can't believe these first two projects are almost as old as me. I mean.
They are old, Jay. These first two projects you're referencing, they are old.
It's wild that we've done nothing since 85. And I mean.
No, it's not. There hasn't been anything done since 85, because they did the 2004 project, which added, added those. Just as the equipment out there is operating, has been operating for, some of it's actually since the original 58.
58, yeah.
When the plant was built. So there's more, more to come down the road, which, you know, that's the 2023 and on down. Did want to address, in the Reserve Transfers Water Meter Replacement Program, Brian wanted me to bring this up specifically. There has not been a meter replacement program since 2009. And we have about half of our 17,000 meters in town that are currently over the 15-year recommended life. So this does impact revenue. As a meter gets older, it's measuring less water that's actually passing through it. And so what he would, what he's proposing here is to do a three-year, basically bump up in meter replacement, about 2,000 meters a year. A little, little more in that, is that right, Angela? And that would get about half those replaced, and then from there on, in perpetuity, about 1,500 meters a year. So that every 15 years, you'd have.
A new meter?
A new meter put in. And these would be, put the same lines we have now with automatic meter reads from that standpoint. Would also involve one additional position in the Public Works end of the world, in the water maintenance to, that their job would be to replace meters. And, and that would come, have lost positions in utility building, have it filled, and this would basically be that type of position where we're replacing what was in utility building with Public Works.
So it's a transfer of position?
Well, we had, what did we have? How many service?
Years ago, we had like six water meter technicians, and now we have three. I believe that might be what you're referring to.
Right, that's, that's what we're referring to.
Yeah, we're not eliminating anybody currently for this new position, so.
Right, it's just an unfilled position that's now being filled.
So it has stayed, i- it's truly an unfilled position at this point? Or unfilled posi-, no, it would be a new position?
It'd be a new position.
Is the funding coming out of the reserves, or is it coming out of general fund?
The operating.
That, that, that would be in the general fund.
That would be in the general fund.
Budget, but $336,000 would be the.
The actual replacement of the meters themselves.
Meter replacements, yeah.
Very good. Quickly, that, that concludes, unless anybody has some additional questions on the Public Works piece. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, not Public Works. There was a question I wanted to ask of Chief Beers that I forgot.
Okay, and I was gonna say, while we've got him up here, if anybody's got anything in the, the lower section that has to do with the Public Works that's stuck in their craw or wanted to address that, if not, then we can let him get back to work or whatever. Is there anything in that reserve piece, the yellow section, that's due to Public Works that he might be able to answer for us?
It's $350,000 in unspecified projects at the RO plant. Basically, it's a plant's 10 years old now, and we're looking at, actually, we have to replace a check valve just right now that was about $3,500, and we've got 10 of those. Coming up.
Yeah, I'm guessing this discussion will continue.
And it will, and it will. Well, thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Beer, I did get my eyes on my notes while you were up the first time. I, I remember a conversation last year about the extractors. And, and of course, you talked a little bit today about cancer-causing agents and those issues faced by firefighters. We funded roughly, well, we funded half, so I think you asked for six and, and got funding for three. I assume you've had those three, or you've gotten those three, or you're in the process of getting them?
We have all six. If you remember, part of the conversation last year was to buy three at the end of last year, and then buy three in this year's budget after the first of the year in 19.
Okay.
And now we did that. We bought.
So you have acquired all six.
Every station now has their own extractor in it. And so after every single call that we go on, it's sort of nice now. All the gear is instantly washed.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief. I guess moving down, again, I don't want to go through a line item. We'll, we'll all take this home and study it. But is there anything in the blue section for engineering that warranted any specific discussion? While we got Jeff sitting in the crowd there. And then if not, I guess I'll open it up. Is there anything in that lower section down there in the capital improvement, reserve transfers? Justin's still with us as well. Anything down there that warrants any additional discussion?
I did have one question on the drainage complaint project. Is that up in the northeast?
Actually, the drainage complaints projects are typically the, let's see, just want to see which item it is.
About the fourth one, fourth one down, I think, from the top.
Oh, the curb and gutter ones? That, those are typically the ones that get completed with our street project.
Okay, okay.
The $100,000, plus or minus. Sometimes we go over that, sometimes we're a little less, but so that's what that one is.
When are we gonna start talking about this again?
You will.
About what?
I will be working on a prepared budget that will be given to the city council. Projection right now is at the July 5th meeting.
Okay.
And it's gonna be all buttoned up, recommended. We're going back to a little bit, the process we did, the normal process, different than what we did the last two years, so.
But our opportunity to get in your ear about certain pet projects or things like that is, that window's growing short. We need to.
Well, and then you'll have the whole month of July to talk, because what I present isn't necessarily what you might want. So.
So no special meetings?
Not until July.
Not until July.
Okay, have you figured out July dates yet?
No.
I, okay.
John, on that airport land acquisition, did we use the 150 that we budgeted last year?
We took that out.
We, we cut. We cut it all.
Yeah, we took that out.
And that may very well be a recommendation again.
Okay.
So we, okay, we took it out totally last year?
Yep.
Yep.
And there's still no pressure from the FAA to?
You know, that's the frustrating thing. It's like, maybe there is, maybe there isn't. That's why last year, when we were looking to cut, I said, you know, we're, we're cutting it. And at, you know, at the point in time when that pressure comes, then I think we need to buckle up and do a comprehensive acquisition altogether, not a little bit here, a little bit there.
But we showed some good intent.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, good faith effort.
What did become of that structure? I know Interfaith was potentially involved, but that didn't pan out? Did we just simply demol-, did we just simply demolish the structure? Or recycle any of it or whatever?
We did. So we, we talked with Interfaith about moving the, the structure. Really, that, that did not turn out to be feasible. So we did allow them to salvage. So they came in and they.
So they salvaged?
They, I mean, they took everything, carpet, tile, or molding. I mean, everything, everything they could get off the wall and out of, out of basement, they took.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah. And then shortly after, we, we demoed. So it's gone. It's just an open lot at this point.
I would like to say, just going back to one of Justin's projects, that in the vein of maintaining what we have, if something needs to be cut, I would rather it be the study looking into the adventure park. Not that that's not exciting, but we have enough to kind of grapple with that we already have.
And maybe there could be a loose exploration with a private entity and see if there's any desire out there at all without having the expense.
Yeah. I mean, I'd really rather those funds go to a aquatics plan, honestly, but.
That was, that was on my list. I mean, that, you know, that just came about a couple of weeks ago and.
It is a nifty, I mean, it's a neat idea.
Well, I, I think, I think Justin's idea of the, of the bike deal is non-programmed. This idea of a amusement park is, you know, that property isn't very big when you look at it. To the east is a sewer lagoon that, that isn't going anywhere. To the back is FOP. I don't know what the acreage of that is. But it's not, it's not just a used piece, and to me, that's, you know, we've got a lot of priorities without just jumping into new stuff right now, but.
Yeah, site's three and a half, four acres. It's not.
Oh, that's smaller than I thought, yeah.
It, it looks bigger than, than it is. It's kind of an odd shape. It's a triangle shape.
I mean, I like the idea of doing something with the waterway, and I mean, I like the idea. I just don't want another, you know, I don't want a Joyland on our hands, like, thinking really, you know, this is gonna be great, and this is, you know, gonna fund itself. I just, I've got a lot to take care of right now.
And I, I would agree with, with all the statements that were made about that. We need to focus on maintenance. Yes, that would be a great project. Yes, it'd probably bring people in, but is now the right time?
Yeah. Got a lot of spray parks. We've got a lot of equipment, playground equipment we could upgrade.
Well, and, and I think that, unless there's more, I was gonna say, that kind of concludes that portion of it. I would, I would challenge all of us up here to be mindful of all these great studies that we have that are out there. Sometimes we, we've commissioned them, and they'll sit on the shelf or whatever, the green plate piece, the sewer studies, the, the road studies or whatever. So let's, let's listen to what the experts are telling us. Let's also listen to what our constituents are telling us. Sometimes, you know, we get wrapped up in our hierarchy of needs, but there are some things that the people are screaming that they want. So let's be mindful of what they're telling us as well. And like I said, with that, with that, there's no motion required. What is the next item?
Item seven, report to city officials.
Okay, I think I'll start with Nancy today, if you don't mind.
Uh, nothing.
Nothing to report. John?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Steve?
All those two weeks off, and matter of fact, it's, we have a meeting that day, and it'd be mentioned again then, but there is a, a public forum. That may not be the exactly accurate word. Today is what, the 4th? The 18th of this month in regards to a follow-up to the Strong Towns presentation that we had back in October, I think it was. So that's two weeks away. If you've got the time and the interest, put it on your calendar. I think it's seven, 6:30 or 7:00.
It's 6 o'clock at the Arts Center.
Six, 6 o'clock. Thank you, Nancy. So two weeks from today, 6:00, 6:00 PM that evening at the Arts Center. Interested persons in regards to Strong Town concepts and ideas. That's it.
Very good. Jay?
Yeah, I did have one item there. Thank you. Last time we met, I had requested some information on housing violations that ended up in court, and you were gonna try to get some numbers about what percentage of people who receive these violations are being, you know, kind of funneled through our court system. And also wanted to know if any of those individuals were actually sentenced to jail for those violations. Were you able to get any of that?
I don't have it now. I've sent that over. I can tell you the answer to one. Nobody's been sentenced to jail.
Okay. I hear all of these stories, and I'm horrified. I'm like, if we're sending people to jail over housing violation, something's not right.
Without going through all the data, was that there's a, a great percentage that just get taken care of.
Okay.
A great percentage. So I'll, I'll get that number for you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much, and that's all I had.
Very good. Lastly, I'll add, we had a very nice meeting of the Southwest Brick Town Group last night. Nancy was there, John was there. Couple of things that were brought up were the CD BG grant opportunities, and that was both for landlords and for homeowners. And the funding on that is somewhat dependent on the amount of pre-applications that they receive. So anybody who knows anybody or anybody happens to be listening, and you think that you might need the criteria, fill out the pre-applications. They can be gotten at the city. I believe they can also be found on the city website and other, other places. And then a very, very preliminary conversation about the Woody Seat, but I thought it was a good conversation that we had with community, that particular community who has a direct impact with it being right in their backyard. And this is just the beginning of the conversation, but it, it was a good conversation. That's all I wanted to add as well. John?
Yeah, that's all I have. I don't have anything.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second.
Moved second, please call the roll.
Deckard?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldman?
Yes.
Haras Stikovol?
Yes.
Yes. Marathon. Marathon.